Welcome, everyone. My name is John Schoenhorn. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I'm going to ask that we start with a roll call of members who are present.
Carrie Callahan.
Present.
John Carrier.
I see. I want to hear your opinion on her.
Ron Llewellyn. Still don't see Ron in. Okay, so we're going to say absent. Sarah Nadine, we know is absent from previous email. And Rob Phillips is absent from previous email. John Schoenhorn.
Present.
John Brockelman.
Present.
Harry Marsh. Absent. And Steve Walsh.
Present.
Okay. So the first order of business is going to be to appoint, since we are down a couple of people, I'm going to appoint both alternate commissioners Brockelman and Walsh to sit on behalf of Commissioners Nadine and Phillips, respectively, for all of the matters that are going to occur this evening. And we'll just see if Ron Llewellyn comes on. He'll just join as a full member without having to appoint him. All right. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to, before I have Carrie Callahan, the Secretary, read the legal notice, I'm sorry, I just, I'm hearing an echo in the background. I don't know what that was. So, anybody speaking? Okay. So I just want to make, take a prerogative of the Chair just to say, welcome everyone to this meeting. And in light of things that have been going on, on a national level, I just want to say that I have never felt that this board has ever been in any way partisan. I believe that everyone on this board equally looks at each individual matter according to the merits of it. And although we don't always agree on everything, I believe that everything is done professionally and in accordance with our rules and regulations and the statutes. And I just want to say that I'm proud to serve with each and every person who's on this board. Having said that, I would ask Mr. Callahan, as the Secretary, to read the legal notice, if he will, please.
I will. Notice is hereby given that the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold an online public hearing on Monday, March 15, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. on the following applications. Depot Place Terminal, Inc., application for variance for apartment use on the second floor of building at 17 Depot Place, C1 Zone. Maureen Mohide and Leanne Stevens, application to reduce rear yard variance from 25 feet to 18 feet for addition to house at 12 Marchwood West, R40C Zone. Danny Mancino, application for reduced yard variance, front yard variance from 50 feet to 39 feet for construction of new house on lot 8631, Pheasant Hill Road, R80 Zone. Robert Sekinger, application for variance from Article 4 Special Regulations, Section 8A4, off-street parking for reduction in front yard parking setback from 65 feet to 15 feet at 130 Bird's Eye Road, PR Zone.
Carrie, you got muted. You're muted.
Was I muted the whole time? I didn't mute myself.
No, no. You just muted it. You just voted it after our, after the last thing you just said.
Robert Sekinger, did you hear that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good. So start.
Okay. So we're Tracy Sefanik.
Yes.
I don't know how I muted myself, but Tracy Sefanik, Appeal from Zoning Enforcement Officer's Order Regarding Lot 8655, Pinnacle Ridge Road, adjacent to 21 Pinnacle Ridge Road, R40 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. A link to the meeting may be found at the town of Farmington's website, which is listed in the notice. A copy of this protocol is available online at the website or by calling the Planning Department at the Farmington Town Hall. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, February 25, 2021. John Schoenhorn, Chairman.
All right. And I'm just going to ask for those who are not speaking that they should mute their microphones because we're hearing a lot of background noise. And with this many people on, it does make it difficult to hear. And I note that Mr., that Harry Marsh has appeared. And Shannon, have we heard at all from Ron Llewellyn?
He's on. I'm being told he's on as well.
All right. Well, what we'll do then is I'll just indicate that we're going to then alternate the alternate commissioners. Since we have three alternates, and if Mr. Llewellyn is on, I would just ask to add the roll call to those two individuals, if you wouldn't, if you would, please.
Sure. Ron, can you confirm your attendance, please?
Yes, I'm on.
Thank you. And Harry Marsh, can you confirm your attendance, please? Harry Marsh, can you confirm your attendance?
His microphone is off, I note.
It was on.
He's on mute.
Harry, you've got to unmute your microphone. Okay. Harry, can you confirm your attendance, please?
This is Harry Turjean. Are you speaking to me?
No.
No. Harry Marsh, one of our commission members. That's okay. Thank you. Harry Marsh, can you confirm your attendance?
All right. Well, we're going to, since I've already appointed alternate commissioners Walsh and Brockelman for the first hearing, we'll proceed. If Commissioner Marsh does, is able to get on, then we'll alternate one of the alternates. So why don't we proceed? The way this commission works, we're going to go with the Depot Place Terminal matter first. The applicant will present his or her or its arguments in favor of the application. We can, we will ask questions at that point. We'll then open it up to the public for anyone else who wishes to speak in favor, and then we will go to people who are opposed. So who will be speaking on behalf of Depot Place Terminal? Please identify yourself by name and by your title and your address. And I would ask everyone else to mute their microphones during the presentation. Thank you.
This is Ron Dolly. I'm President, Depot Place Terminal, Inc., 17 Depot Place, Unionville.
Please proceed.
It was our intention. I did not take the original permit out. The original owner was Wilbur Charette, who owned the property prior to me. He said he had gotten the permit. It was our intention at the time to, in the construction of the second floor, is to make that, in fact, an apartment. So we're here to ask permission to continue.
Could you just indicate for us a little bit about why you believe that this is a necessary hardship, please?
There's an existing apartment there. I know the property card listed as mixed-use retail apartment. So it'd be our want for having an apartment there.
Anything else you wish to say?
No. It's, again, our intention to have that as an apartment when we built it because of the existing apartment there. Having retail on the bottom and apartment on the top.
All right. Commissioner Callahan, any questions? Commissioner Callahan?
I'm sorry. I forgot to unmute myself again. I'll get used to it. My question is similar to that asked by Commissioner Schoenhorn. Is, on the application, the indication of substantial hardship is that there's an existing apartment. Is this adding another apartment?
There's an option for either, whether it's going to be an additional apartment or to break through to the other apartment. Right now, it's a standalone apartment.
Is it occupied? Nothing further from you?
Okay. There is an existing second-floor apartment in this location, and this is the proposed space on this part of the building. And this, you can see the different roof lines.
So it's two separate apartments?
Correct. There's an existing and a proposal for a second one in this portion of the building.
Commissioner Carrier?
So it's because, is it because the building is non-conforming now? Is that the reason for the variance? I'm trying to make light of this. I've pre-read everything, but I can't see it on the screen because it's itty-bitty.
Shannon, can you pull up the applicant?
So, John, what do you, what part of this do you want to see, John?
Were you asking me or Carrier?
Carrier, I'm sorry. Carrier, Commissioner Carrier.
I was, I was asking about the nonconformity part of it.
So there is an existing apartment on the front of the building, and it's easy for me to show this on the aerial. And to the best we can determine, it is an exist, an existing nonconforming use for this building. It is on the second floor of the front portion of this, of the Depot Place building, in this upper corner where the cursor is here on the, on the screen. And that's existing nonconforming to the best that we can determine, going back to even 1993. It showed as, there's an existing plan in the building file. It showed this space as an existing second-floor apartment. There is no variance on file. There's no, any use planned here. The building's been around for quite some time. So this addition here, this, this portion of the building where you can see the newer roof line where the number 17 is, that portion of the building was expanded in 2007 as part of work to redo the roof. It was also raised and a second floor created. And at that point in time, the DVA approved a special exception to allow the building to be expanded in this location because obviously it was a violation of setbacks. So the special exception was for the dimensional, the expansion of existing nonconforming building with respect to the dimensional requirement. And at the time, for the permitting, it was indicated that the use was to be storage space. And now Mr. Dolly would like that to be another apartment space. Does that help?
That helps tremendously. Thank you. No further questions. Commissioner Brockelman, questions?
Yes. So existing now, it is an existing storage area. Would you be adding anything else on, or would you just be converting the storage area into an apartment?
Just converting it to apartment space.
Okay. All right. And there is an apartment in front that is a residential house that's right next to it that is, that's not part of the property?
Correct. That's occupied, owned by a different owner.
Okay. Those are my questions. I'm done.
Commissioner Walsh?
No questions at this time.
I see that Ms., that Commissioner Marsh is now present. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Marsh? You would have to unmute your, your microphone. You're, you're still muted. All right. Raise your hand, Commissioner Marsh, if you have a question. Okay. We'll wait for you to unblock your, unmute. You gotta, there's a micro, I think, Shannon, could you assist me? He's obviously not seeing where his button is. There's a microphone icon. Wait.
Okay. Am I unmuted?
Now we, we can hear you.
Am I unmuted?
We can hear you. Do you have a question?
I can hear you too.
Do you have a question?
I'm trying to phrase it. Give me a second.
All right.
Why hasn't this done before, earlier? In other words, made that into an apartment first and then go into the existing apartment? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Do you have any questions to answer to that?
I, so can you rephrase the question? I don't quite understand.
Yeah, I don't understand the question either.
Well, why did, why was, yeah, there was, there was just empty space in, in that area that you wanted to put the second apartment?
It's framed now. It was, the construction was done via the permit, Shannon, what, 2009?
Correct, I believe. Correct. 2009.
It was left, as I understand it, Harry, as storage space at the time.
It was put on the permit as storage, and then the, the plan shows an apartment up there. Office apartment. So I, again, I didn't fill out the original permit. Shannon brought to my attention, obviously recently, that it says storage and not apartment. But the plan showed, shows apartment and office. So I guess that's why I'm here straight now.
Commissioner Walsh, do you have any other questions? I mean, Commissioner Marsh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. If it's an office, it's an office. If it's set up as an office and you're using the space right now as an office, is it correct?
I'm, I'm sorry, for, it's an office storage at this point. We haven't finished the apartment. We haven't gone forward with it. But it's framed out for an apartment.
No more questions?
As Chair, as Chair, I get to go last. I just have a couple of questions. And look, could you, Shannon, could you pull up the floor plan, the second-floor floor plan that was submitted? My question is, what would be the size, the square footage of this new apartment if we approve it?
The second floor. I don't want to raise my hand.
Yeah, we can see it.
So this is the, so this, this is the plan from 2007. Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Yes. Yes. I'm asking for the square footage of the proposed new apartment.
Uh, Mr. Dolly, do you happen to know that offhand? I'm looking at 22 by...
Just let me go quick here. 22, they're probably 650 square feet.
And how many rooms would it be?
Three rooms, basically.
All right. And if I may ask, Shannon, is there not a specific minimum square footage if you're going to have a separate apartment there within the zoning rules for the town of Farmington?
Uh, there is when we're in our other zoning areas, when there's specific apartment, a specific apartment space is being proposed. So I think one of them, the RDM, I think, has a minimum 500 foot. I, yeah, I don't know all the different, each, each area that allows some apartment space has a slightly different wording, so.
But as I understand, this is, okay. This is a, as I understand it, a special use permit to allow an apartment in a non-residential neighborhood, right? That's the nature of the application?
Correct.
And I thought that there's a, I know there, I think 500 square feet is the minimum for an apartment, and I think it goes up per room. And I just wanted to make sure if we're going to, if we grant this, that we're meeting the town's minimum requirement for a special, for apartment use in a C1 zone. That's all I'm asking. And I, I thought I had had it handy. I just don't have it in front of me. And while, while I'm asking that, Mr. Dolly, I see in this, in this floor plan, I see a bathroom that's shown in this second-floor plan. Is that a current bathroom, or is that one that's being proposed as part of this construction?
Uh, that's future, the part of it, because we've not done any, except for framing.
Okay. And where is the bathroom for the existing apartment?
Uh, ins, inside the existing apartment.
I know, but where, where, is there a place you can just show where it's, where it is in there? I just don't see where it is.
It's off the edge. This is the line, Mr. Chairman. This is the line, so the existing apartment space is off the edge of the page.
Oh, I see. Okay. I see. All right.
So this is the space, and then this, everything to the left of this line is the new space.
All right. Then what is that, the double, the, the double stripe, that line there, what is that?
So the best I can determine was an expansion of the existing apartment space out to this wall. A vestibule was created, so there was a second entrance for this apartment, and then an entrance into here for the office space. And these were shown as exterior stairs and have built, been built in as interior stairs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So these stairs are now, comes into a vestibule. There's two separate entrances, and this was a expansion for this apartment space.
Okay. And do you, to your knowledge, Shannon, does this space meet minimum apartment requirements as first, for this permit?
So what we're looking at, I unfortunately didn't hear. Mr. Dolly, what did you say was the apartment space roughly?
I didn't do the math. Johnny Carrier, do you have a calculator there? Um, I, it's 22 by...
Yeah, it's 22, but I don't have all the dimensions.
Um, yeah. Mr. Hammerberg didn't get that. It looks 22 by 40 is 800.
Yeah. So we're, we're fine. We're well within.
All right.
Because it's 500, yeah, just for reference, the RDM zone says each dwelling unit shall have at least two rooms. There shall be at least 500 square feet of living area for a two-room unit, and at least 600 square feet for a three-room.
Excellent. Okay. It meets it. Okay. Does, does any Commissioner, I don't, I don't have any additional questions before we open it up?
I have two questions.
Ms. Ron Llewellyn.
Yeah. So I just want to understand, this plan was proposed when? This, this entire plan was proposed when?
This, 2007.
Okay. So this is a plan that was proposed. Was it approved at any point in time?
Yeah. It was proposed and approved in 2007 as this expansion of apartment space. And then at TPZ, it was stated that it was storage space. When it came in for building permit in 2009, it was labeled as office space, as shown here, and this is the building permit plan.
Okay. And there is an existing apartment there that conforms to everything?
I have no idea if it conforms. It dates back to before 1993.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Just that all the plans are going to apply and meet all standard building codes?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
It will. It got caught in the building per, it was in for building permit to have it finished, so it was coming back through for building permit for all the finishes. So it will have a thorough review with the building office. It got stopped with zoning.
Thank you.
All right. Any other Commissioner questions?
No.
All right. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the applicant? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none?
Called, oh, just if you're called in, I just want to make sure that we're very clear. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Just use the function in Zoom to raise your hand, and you'll be called on to ask a question and acknowledge. Okay. No, we're clear. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. And again, for purposes of the discussion, we're going to vote on this matter. We're going to have a motion. And for purposes of this discussion, only Commissioner Marsh cannot participate at this point. So can I have, hear a motion regarding this particular application?
I'll make the motion. It's Carrie Callahan, the Secretary. I'll make the motion to approve the application of Depot Place Terminal, Inc. for a use variance for an apartment on the second floor of the building at 17 Depot Place.
And I'll second Johnny Carrier.
All right.
Commissioner Carrier here. I, I don't see an issue with this. There's already an existing apartment there. Obviously, there's some history here, and it seems like the applicant bought this, and there was a lot of things going on. And I think they only found out some of the issues when they were pulling the building permit. So at this point, I would be inclined to be in favor of this application.
Okay. And I'll just speak and say that I'm also in favor of it. I believe that there is already an apartment there. The additional space is, has been vacant or just being used as storage. I certainly don't know what the, what the rents are going to be, that's, that's going to be charged. But I think to the extent that there's a shortage of affordable housing and apartments in the town of Farmington and/or Unionville, I think that this... um, I think that this will, rather than cause a detriment to that area. Um, it's next to the rail trail, and, and it's an area that's, I guess it's fairly ancient, and I'm glad to see that it continues to be used and fully functional, so, um, um, anyone else wish to speak regarding the, uh, application? Any other member?
Just to comment that it, I, I hope and expect that it will turn out better than the dump I lived in when I was in law school.
All right, we won't put that in the minutes, though, all right? Um, and, and in any event, um, I'm gonna, I guess if it's time for, anyone else wish to speak, or should we go to the roll call?
I suggest, Mr. Schoenhorn, that we go to the roll call.
Okay, um, I would ask the, uh, town planner, assistant town planner, to please, um, call the, call the question.
Certainly, uh, Commissioner Callahan.
Aye.
Commissioner Carrier?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Llewellyn?
Aye.
Commissioner Brockelman?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
And Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Aye, so the, so the, uh, the application is approved, and, uh, the, um, material will be submitted and, and, uh, accordingly through the town planner's office, so. All right, so let's move on to the, um, the second item on the agenda. Maureen, I don't, I don't wanna mispronounce the name, Moidey, M-O-H-Y-D, or Mohide, and Leanne Stevens' application to reduce rear yard variance. Um, and again, I'm gonna ask people who are not currently speaking to, to, uh, mute their, their microphones because there's feedback that I don't know if we're all hearing. I certainly am, so. Right, so who will be speaking in, uh, favor of this application?
Good evening, Jack Kemper, Kemper Associates Architects, and we're the architects for the addition. You guys can hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you give us an address, please?
Uh, seven ninety Farmington Avenue, Farmington, Connecticut.
All right, please proceed.
Um, we are looking to build a, a three-season room, uh, over, uh, behind the family room, and it is over the existing deck. Um, it's an R forty open space zone, correct, Shannon? The open space zone.
Correct.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, so, uh, because the shape of this lot, it's really gonna got the, the rear, the rear yard setback over the side, and that's, I think, um, it's kind of the, the, uh, the geometry of the lot that is doing us, doing this to us, because the side setback is fifteen feet, which, you know, we could, we could, uh, we couldn't, we could work with, but unfortunately, this is the setback. The, the neighboring, the neighbor behind, to the side of this house is the Town of Farmington. It's open space. And Shan, and as you can see on my site plan, the, the, the existing deck is dotted in, and the proposed addition is in, well, it was red, now it looks pink. Um, so we're kind of building right over where the existing deck is. We are looking to, I think we're out maybe another foot from where the existing deck is. You see the, the, the red line versus the, the black line. And, uh, Shannon, if you want to show them the architectural plans. And, and Leanne Maureen are on the call, too, if you have questions for them, but we're really, uh, just, um, extending the existing roof line toward the rear, toward the south. And, uh, on the side, uh, we're just, we're treating it as all window, skylights, uh, an interior room, um, that, uh, is, uh, a three-season room. And, um, I, I think we would take any questions.
Right, um, before we do that, I'll just indicate that in, at this hearing, I'm gonna have Commissioner, alternate Commissioner Marsh, um, be seated on behalf of Commissioner Nadine and Commissioner Walsh to be seated in place of Commissioner Phillips in this matter, but everyone gets to ask questions, so I'll just go through the, the list. Um, Commissioner Callahan?
Mr. Chair, I apologize, um, for interrupting, but it would seem that Mr. Marsh has, uh, dropped off the call.
Oh, okay, well, in that case, um, again, it's, Commissioner Brockel, Brockelman will be seated on behalf of, um, of Commissioner Nadine.
Commissioner.
All right, so we're starting with questions. Commissioner Callahan?
I don't have any questions on this application, thank you.
Commissioner Carrier?
Uh, just one, uh, what issues are there, if any, of doing this three-season room in another portion of the house?
Uh, well, because Maureen needs a, a wheelchair to get around, the other part of the house is actually bunked in, so this is actually the best place for it, for the interior, too.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
I have no questions yet.
Commissioner Brockelman?
No questions.
Commissioner Walsh?
Uh, no questions.
And, um, I just have a couple of quick questions. Um, you said that it's open space behind the house. Are there wetlands back there as well?
I, I, we didn't find any on the map. Shannon, is, are you aware of any wetback there?
The, the wetlands are far off the edge of the, the page, so given that this is being worked on in existing, uh, space, and there is existing footings in place, I think there's one or two footings being added. This is not a, there's no wetland issue with us.
Okay, well, my question was gonna be, is there any question about the roofing material and the impervious nature of it adding to any kind of runoff problems into a wetland?
I know, uh, related area, the roofing material will be a continuation of what's existing.
Okay, all right, and so there's no, uh, application to inland wetlands either, then, I'd take it? Okay, I have no further questions. Um, does any other commissioner have any additional questions before we, uh, move to the public?
I do not.
All right, yes, no, no little hands are being raised, so, um, I'm gonna then, uh, now open it up to the, uh, to the members of the public. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this application? And we'll give people a minute to either raise their hand on the Zoom screen or in some other way indicate that they wish to speak. Anybody, Shannon?
No, you're all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, does anyone want, wish to speak in opposition to this application? All right, hearing none, then I'm going to, uh, close the hearing, and then we'll move to discussion. I start by entertaining a motion on this application.
I'll do it if you want.
Sure.
I will, uh, okay, I, uh, I make a, a motion to approve Maureen Mohide and Leanne Stevens' application to reduce rear setback variance from twenty-five feet to eighteen feet for addition to house at twelve Larchwood Road, or Larchwood West, R forty seat zone.
Is there a, that would be Commissioner Brockelman? Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Carrier.
All right, discussion?
To me, it follows everything, and they've given a reason for their hardship.
Okay, based on the, the slope and the shape of the property?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else wish to comment?
Yeah, I raised my hand, and I believe the shape of the property, which is kind of a trapezoidal shape, uh, does establish sufficient hardship.
All right, anyone else? All right, all in favor? Shall we, uh, roll call, I guess?
Uh, certainly, uh, Commissioner Callahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Carrier?
Aye.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Aye.
Commissioner Brockelman?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
And Chair Schoenhorn?
Aye. The application is approved, and, uh, you'll receive the proper notice and be in touch with the planning and zoning office, and, uh, I guess move forward from there.
Thank you all very much.
It's been our pleasure.
Thank you.
Uh, the next matter would be Danny Mancini's application to reduce the front yard variance from fifty feet to thirty-nine feet on, on a lot on Pheasant Hill Road. And who will be speaking in favor of that application?
Ronald Wolf is present, if you could hear me, uh, professional engineer representing the applicant, Danny Mancini.
Okay, and what's your address, sir?
Uh, thirty-nine Sherman Hill Road, Woodbury, Connecticut, zero-six-seven-nine-eight.
All right, you may proceed.
Okay, um, Ron Wolf, professional engineer representing the applicant, uh, Mr. Danny Mancini of Wolkit. And the property, um, is an existing building lot. It's located on the south end of Pheasant Hill Road. Uh, was created as part of a subdivision in nineteen seventy-one. Uh, the property has an overall area of two, uh, acres, and it's located in the R eighty zoning district. Uh, the north end of the property, uh, let's see, I don't think you could see my, uh, mouse, but, um, the northerly, uh, or left side of the property where the house is situated is generally flat. Um, and the topography is such that the lot slopes down to the south and the west, uh, towards the, the yellow shaded area where the wetlands are, uh, located, uh, to the rear of the property. Uh, the prop, pretty much the entire property is wooded, and, um, it's bounded on the north side by Gene Watson, on the south side by the Farmington Land Trust, which is on the right side of the map, and on the west side, uh, now or formerly, uh, by John Lavery. As you can see on the map, um, to the rear and to the west of the property, um, there is a large, uh, wetland area. Um, there's also, uh, small vernal pool just located mostly off-site to the southwest, southwest corner of the property. Uh, the wetlands were delineated by Eric Davison, a professional, professional soil scientist. And, um, Mr. Mancini is proposing to construct a three-bedroom house on the property, as shown on the site plan here. Uh, we did make application to the Wetlands Commission, uh, last year, uh, for this application due to the, um, regulated activity proposed, and they did approve the application with a recommendation that we present this proposal to the, the zoning board of appeals to, uh, move the house, uh, further away from the wetland area, just to, uh, reduce the amount of, um, regulated activity, uh, associated with the, with the project. Uh, so we did a feasibility plan, and we determined that if we slid the house forward a ten feet, we would, um, reduce the regulated activity by about twenty-two hundred square feet, and increase the separating distance between the proposed grading, uh, and the wetland areas and the vernal pools, um, that are on the property. As part of the wetlands approval, we did, uh, grant a conservation easement, uh, along that, um, back end of the property, which is shaded in yellow. Uh, that represents about one point one nine acres of the property, which has been deeded as, uh, conservation easement. And, um, pretty much summarizes my presentation. I can answer any questions at this time.
All right, um, let's go through the, uh, list of commissioners, and, um, Commissioner Callahan, you have any questions?
No, I think the presentation answered the questions that I had in mind.
Commissioner Carrier?
Uh, no questions at this time.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
No questions, sir.
Commissioner Brockelman?
None at this time.
Commissioner Walsh?
Uh, no questions at this time.
Um, I just have one question. Um, does, if we approve this, does this have to go back to the inland wetlands? Or any final approval, or is that already set?
Uh, to, to my understanding, it's all set. Uh, this would just be an improvement to the plan that was actually officially approved, but we did submit this as a conceptual plan that we, uh, we did discuss bringing in front of your board, so, um, we, I do not believe we would have to go back. Maybe Shannon could confirm that for me.
That is correct. The commission specifically approved both, both plans with a positive recommendation to VBA for the plan that's before you this evening.
Okay, and, and I have just one other quest, uh, question. It's true that almost directly across the street, there is a house that's very close to the road. It's certainly, uh, much closer than the, uh, proved, otherwise proved front setback. Is that correct?
On the north end of the property, uh, on Pheasant Hill Road, the houses are generally pretty close to the street, correct?
And is, that's, I, when I went out there, I did a site inspection. Is that true? Um, Shannon, that the house directly across from where this driveway would be, if you go back to the, uh, the GIS map or diagram, there's a house, um, direct that house there is very close to the road, is it not?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, anybody, any other commissioner have any questions? Hearing none, I'm gonna now open it up to the public. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? No hands being raised, Shannon?
No, sir.
Okay, anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? No comments?
Hand feature, raise your hand feature in Zoom? No, I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then, uh, hearing none, uh, we will now close the hearing to public comment and go directly to discussion. Can I entertain a motion, please?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Who just spoke?
Ron. Ron Llewellyn.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second Johnny Carrier.
All right, discussion?
Commissioner Callahan?
Yep.
It seems to me that the concept here is we're gonna move the house forward about ten feet in order to reduce the impact on wetlands and the impact on the conservation easement, which seems to be kind of a win-win situation.
And I, I will just state for the record, I agree with that. I think that the hardship is the amount of wetlands on this property, and a decision to not encroach upon that, uh, also because of the, uh, conservation easement that is going to be, uh, uh, put in place here. I think that it protects the wetlands, and, uh, the fact that this house will be close to the road does not in any way negatively impact the neighborhood, particularly that the house across the street is within, I think it's much closer than what is proposed here to the street. Um, that's my comment. Anyone else wish to comment? Any other member of the commission wish to comment?
Uh, Ron, Ron Llewellyn, Chair, Chairman Schoenhorn, I agree with your statement there. Very, very well pointed.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, so, um, in that regard, I think we'll go to a vote, and I think we should do a roll call as usual. And do you mind, uh, Shannon doing that?
No, not at all, that's fine. Uh, Commissioner Callahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Carrier?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Llewellyn?
Aye.
Commissioner Brockelman?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
And Chair Schoenhorn?
Aye. The, uh, application is approved, and, uh, we'll follow up with, uh, town staff regarding the next steps, all right? Congratulations. All right, have a great day.
You, too.
You too. Thank you.
All right, we're moving along rather nicely here. We'll go to the next matter on the agenda, which is the Robert Schenginger application for variance for off-street parking on, at 130 Bird's Eye Road in a PR zone. And who will be speaking on behalf of the applicant? Speak up if you're here to speak on behalf of that application.
Yes, I'm here. I'm a landscape architect in the state of Connecticut at 772 Farmington Avenue. I'm representing-
Excuse me, we didn't hear your name. We didn't hear your name.
Oh, I said I'm Robert Schenginger. I'm a landscape architect in the state of Connecticut. My office is at 772 Farmington Avenue. This is the Connecticut School of Broadcasting site, as you well know. The issue is that in the PR zone as exists now, you're not allowed to have parking in the front yard. Obviously, as you can see along here, see the jagged parking and the darker one? There is parking there and driveways already. It's substandard in terms of health, safety, and welfare issues. It doesn't meet the current parking requirements and we have a bunch of parking here. The reason I'm asking for the relief, and we pushed our own proposed parking back 15 feet, because the regulation in PR also says that it has to be 15 feet away from the side and rear yards. We thought, well, we'll be consistent. Move it back as much as we can. This, as you know, sits down in a hole. We have considerable wetlands of the three and a half acres, almost four, one whole acres wetlands. And even though we're decreasing coverage so we don't have to have any detention on site, there's no water quality renovation as well. And the only places we can put those in are here and here, which precludes or obviates our ability to have more parking off to the, you know, parking off to the north in this area. Also, all the utilities underground are over here too, as well as the sanitary sewer and the electric service. So we're asking for relief on that. And by doing that, we were able to consolidate parking up here. Right here is the upland review area. Only the front area in here is in the upland review. But by consolidating the parking that exists already in front, making it more efficient, we're able to increase coverage in there, but decrease coverage in the wetland up in the upland review area, not in the non-reviewable area, which is up front. Almost the whole site's in upland review, except for this one pocket in the front. So, and we need the area also to meet our requirement for the required amount of parking for the new facility. And if you go to the rendering, which is, I can't move this. Do I move it or do you?
Oh, I move it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So you can see the rendering, correct?
No, I'm talking about the final rendering. This is the, oh, there we are. So you see as we worked it out, up in here, behind the parking, in the back, that's our one more to renovation for all the watershed going there and off to the north and the yard over here after we got past all the utilities. This is the area we have for the front yard renovation basin. And also, we're including screening plantings, all the islands in here. We're doubling the amount, or we're exceeding doubling the amount of landscape trees in the parking area. Basically, we're taking a morphous blob of pavement and reconfiguring under the current zoning regulations and meeting and exceeding all the landscape requirements. That's the end. I'll entertain any questions.
Okay, let's start with going through the list again. Are there any questions, Mr. Callahan?
I do not have any questions on this application. Thank you.
Commissioner Carrier?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Llewellyn? Commissioner Llewellyn?
No questions.
Commissioner Brockelman?
No questions.
And Commissioner Walsh?
No questions.
I have a couple of questions. Shannon, could you put up the two pictures that I took of the site? I did a site inspection. I just have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
The first question, though, is, as I understand it, the middle island that has a tree in some, this tree in the middle here with the grass and some bushes, you're getting rid of that, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. And then if you look in this picture to the right of- I'm listening, go ahead.
Yeah. The reason is, all the driveways are substandard, especially coming into, you can't get a fire truck in there, an emergency vehicle in there. There's no turning radius that can accommodate that as well as this angled layout. Go ahead.
Right. No, no, I understand that. And then if you look to the right of this photograph, the Bird's Eye Road is somewhat elevated, as you can see some of the little barriers there as you move along on the area, right? How much of this hill and those trees that we see on the right are you removing in order to redo this parking area there?
None.
None, okay. And what about changing the elevation? Are you going to make it sharper? Or what are you going to do with the current hill that we see there? It's kind of the sloped frontage there?
We're not touching the hill.
Oh, you're not, okay.
We're not touching the hill. No, what I'm doing is, if we can go back to the plan-
Yep.
We're not touching any of that hill. There's about an eight-foot grade change. There is one tree, one tree we're taking out in the far, okay, when we go to the image, do I-
I have another image from the other direction, if you, Shannon. There was another photograph I submitted, if you wouldn't mind pulling that up for me?
I will.
Right here, as you see, here's that slope. We're even putting a catch facing down there. We're raising the bottom left-hand quarter of the front parking. If you go to this picture, I can't control that. There. Okay. In the rendering, if you're looking, as you come into the, you come in from the driveway, you go all the way through the front. Now, if you come to the parking space, that's closest to the road is the front here. That one right there. We're raising that up to actually be at grade. Right now, it sits below grade by about four feet in a pocket. Other than that, this is, the old, the old pavement line goes in front of the proposed evergreens here. So as you can see, we're actually pushing this back and we have no grading here, but we're going to put a catch facing right between, in the ground between the screening plantings and the back end of the parking lot. So we're basically not touching the slope at all. We're only touching one oak tree that's where the end of the pine trees are going to the south here. And that's, we're working within, the old pavement came out further towards the road by three or four feet. We're not, you know, we're not grading anything else. So we're actually at minimal grading. We're not touching the slope. And we're leaving all except the interior plants and one tree out that we're replacing with, I think we have 10 evergreen trees in front. So it would be down in this corner, I don't know if you can see my pointer, but down, right there, right there. But see, we pick up the grade. There's the old pavement below it in brown. And we added a catch facing, you can just see it in there. We're not, the only grade we're picking, that actually comes up to grade, so we pretty much hit grade, graded the quarter of that, and we're in grade all the way along here. So we don't, we're not grading anything in the back of this towards the road.
And are you, and are you, actually, Shannon, could you put the second photograph from the other direction, from the driveway entrance that I sent you? All right. So does this show any, can you see the tree you're removing in this image?
No, it would be way, way back-
Back there, okay.
You see the strong trees in the mid-ground, then there's some in the background? It'd be beyond those. It's way in the, way in the back corner. You wouldn't see it from this picture. None of these are being cut.
Okay, fair enough. And my last question is, how much additional impervious surface are you using in this parking lot than what exists now?
We have less impervious.
Less?
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions. Does either my questions or any, anything that was just discussed, make any of the other commissioners have any other questions they want to ask? Nobody's speaking up, so my next question is, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this application from the public in favor of this, or have questions? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Shannon, any hands up or notices?
No, Mr. Chair, no one's made any indication that they wish to speak on this application.
Okay, I like it when it's non-controversial then. So we'll now close the public hearing and we'll go to the deliberations of the commissioners. And I'll entertain a motion from a member of the commission.
I'll make a motion, Commissioner Carrier, that I approve the Robert Schenginger application for variance, Article 4, Special Regulations, Section 8.8.A.4, Off-Street Parking, for Reduction of Step Backs from 65 to 15 Feet at 130 Bird's Eye Road, PR Zone.
Do I hear a second? Who is that?
Llewellyn, second.
All right, discussion?
I'd just like to say, it sounds like there's going to be less pavement, removing one tree, but adding a lot more plantings and keeping it away from the back where the wetlands are. Sounds again, I think as Carrier said it before, it's a win-win.
And I'll just, yeah, go ahead.
The plan that has been presented, again, not to tire the phrase, but it looks like a big improvement. That's a tired site that needs some upgrading.
Yeah, I was going to say that the nature of the property is such so that it would be a hardship to not allow this kind of improvement to the location. And it is wetlands, it is in a residential area mostly when I toured it, but it's apparently far enough away and with the added, when we talked about front vegetation, it looked like they were talking about maybe arborvitae or something of that nature. So I'm wondering if it would be a friendly amendment to the motion to require that those front parking closest to Bird's Eye Road, that it be approved subject to the adding of the type of vegetation shown in the plan that we see there, in the landscape plan.
That's already into wetlands and planning and zoning with those trees specifically there and called out in our landscape plan?
Well, we're just, we're doing deliberations right now, so we can't entertain statement. We're just talking among the commissioners.
Sorry. I made the original motion and I feel like planning and zoning can, or this is more their purview than ours to talk about the type of trees. Thank you.
Commissioner Llewellyn, I think this establishment is part of our community, has been for a while, so I hope we can help them.
Okay. So I'll call the question. Shannon, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Commissioner Callahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Carrier?
Aye.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Aye.
Commissioner Brockelman?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
And Chair Schoenhorn?
Aye. The application is approved and it will go from there. I'm going to ask the members of the commission, if the next matter may take a little bit more time, do people wish to take a five-minute break?
Let me thank you.
I'm sorry, did anyone say yes?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a five-minute pause for a glass of water or something. That's what I'm going to go get. So we'll just stand in recess for five minutes.
Thank you.
Don't go too far.
No, you're not driving. Because if you're driving, then I gotta let him drive. You're not driving. So I will go. I'm not going to come here.
Are we muted?
No, we're not. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, all right, we're still, I guess, we still have a minute or two here, but I just want to make sure my, my earbuds didn't run out of power, so. I just want to make sure that every, all the commissioners are back, so, before we start, so. I'm sorry, we do what?
We can just do a quick roll call to re-initiate it, okay? It's probably the cleanest way to do it, so there's no questions.
Yep. Do you want to call the roll, Shannon, to see if we're all ready to go?
Before we get everybody back, certainly, I will. Okay, Commissioner Callahan?
I'm back.
Thank you. Commissioner Carrier?
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn? All right, we'll come back. Commissioner Brockelman?
Present.
Commissioner Walsh?
Present.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Present.
Chair Schoenhorn? Okay.
Excellent. And I'm here, I'm here.
And I just wanna make sure at the same time that we've got the applicant and their representatives too, that they're back. Uh, Mr. Tijerian, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and I believe you're, uh, Engineer Centurally?
Yes, in prison.
Okay. Um, Mr. Tijerian, will Ms. Stefanic be joining us this evening?
No, she's not, she's not feeling well.
Okay.
Right. So, proceeding to the last me- the last matter on the public hearing docket, uh, this is the Tracy Stefanic Appeal from the Zoning Enforcement Off- Order, Officer's Order Regarding Lot Eight Six Five Five on Pinnacle Ridge Road in an R forty zone. And, um, because this is an appeal from action by the zoning enforcement officer, this matter proceeds differently than a variance. In this matter, the town of Farmington, who is represented, uh, I'll ask Ms. Rutherford, who represents the town, uh, in this matter tonight?
Uh, Bruce Seer, zoning enforcement officer will be presenting this evening.
Okay, so the zoning enforcement officer will be presenting the case, this is an appeal, so as I understand it, we have the right to decide the matter to either overrule, to, uh, affirm or modify the ruling of the zoning enforcement officer as it pertains to this matter. And it's my understanding the zoning enforcement officer has the duty to proceed and present the case on behalf of the town, and then we will allow the, um, uh, Mr. Tur- Turjernian to, uh, pronounce your name for me so I don't wanna mispronounce it. Turjanian?
Turjanian, the D is silent.
Turjanian, okay.
Thank you.
Um, any questions that you may have of the, of the, uh, zoning enforcement officer should be directed through the chair, so it's not gonna be cross-examination, but if you want to ask questions, it will be directed towards me and then I will have Mr. Seer answer the question, if that works for you. It's a little odd using Zoom as opposed to face-to-face, but are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Seer, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, I can. Um, I'm gonna ask you then to proceed, and if you refer to any documents that are being offered at this hearing, uh, you should have the, uh, uh, the office staff, the planning staff, put it up on the screen so we know what you're referring to. Like, right now, there is, if you're gonna do it as a PowerPoint, I don't know how you're gonna do it, but however wish, you wish to proceed, you now have the floor.
All right, thank you, Chair. Uh, for everyone, I'm Bruce Seer, I'm with the Town of Farmington, uh, Planning Office. As we said, we're, uh, tonight, it's regarding a, uh, a zoning, uh, cease and desist site issue for a property, uh, Lot Eighty-Six Fifty-Five Pinnacle Ridge Road. All right, all set. Go next one. There you go. As, uh, as, uh, as the Chair was saying, the, uh, appeal is a decision of the official charge with the enforcement of the zoning, uh, regulations. So, what they're saying here is, under Statute, Section Eight dash Six, the powers and duties of the Zor- of the Board of Appeals is, uh, the zoning board of appeals should have the following powers and duties, and that's to hear and decide the appeal where it is alleged that there is an error in any order, requirement, or decision made by the official charge with the enforcement of this chapter or by any bylaw, ordinance, or regulation. So, in other words, you're acting as a, uh, a jury. All right, uh, the violations that we have are, go ahead, the placement of earth, uh, materials in the ridgeline protection zone without, uh, a required special permit, and, uh, the placement of more than a hundred cubic yards of fill upon, uh, upon a parcel of land, uh, hold on, I guess that's, I'm sorry, that's a, shall require approval from the commission except where such activity is undertaken in conjunction with the site plan, development plan, or subdivision plan approved by, by the, uh, commission. Next. This is not an application for a variance, so it is a little bit different, and, and a hardship is not a consideration. Uh, the, uh, the ZVA is acting at a quasi-judicial capacity, and therefore, the question before the board is, was the deposition of wood chips at Lot Eighty-Six Fifty-Five Pinnacle Ridge Road a violation of Article Two, Sections Twenty-Four and Twenty-Six of the zoning code? Um, at this point, our, after this is all over, the board can either uphold, reverse, or modify the cease and desist with an affirmative vote of four out of the six.
Very touching.
All right. Sorry, uh, the property is at Lot Eighty-Six Fifty-Five Pinnacle Ridge Road, it's all, it's up on, uh, Isle Creek Mountain, it's right next to, it's in between Twenty-One Pinnacle Ridge and Thirty-One, uh, Pinnacle Ridge. The property is located within, within the town ridgeline protection setback area. Next. A little bit of background on this was, uh, on December sixth of twenty twenty, I received an email complaint from a, uh, resident informing me that on Sundays over the past few weeks, there was at least a dozen or more triaxle trucks hauling fill to the property on Twenty-Five Pinnacle Ridge Road in Farmington. I would guess at this point, in time, that there was probably over three hundred cubic yards or more of fill dumped on the east side of the property, which is located on the ridgeline. Um, I, I did not see any signs of erosion control or containment. So, from that, we went out on December eighth, um, okay, and I, and then I had determined that the violation was in fact. So, some additional, uh, once I found out that the violation was, in fact, we, uh, I've, I, um, I contacted Mr. Uh, Tijerian on December ninth to inform him to stop all work. On December ninth, and then again on December eleventh, we ordered a formal cease and desis issued both via email and certified mail, and there's a copy of the email that went over to him. Um, and then again, December twenty-second, the applicant submitted a special permit, uh, to add some wood chips to the lawn landscaping, is what the application had said, and, and appeal, and, and he also submitted an appeal of the cease and desist order to the zoning board of appeals. So, so in effect, we got an application for a site plan approval, and we got an application to appeal the, uh, the decision. So, at that point, we had to find out which way he was going to go and which, uh, direction first. So, on December twenty-third, the applicant had submitted an email requesting the ZVA appeal be put on hold and to allow the special permit application to proceed. So, in fact, he wanted to hold off on the appeal and see if he can get the special permit approved first. Uh, then on January seventh, Mr. Tijerian invited me to the property to review the proposed work, and then at this site, uh, meeting, I discovered as well that there had been some trees that were had cut along the, uh, in the area as well. Um, and then on, and, and then on January twenty-eighth, the applicant had submitted an email requesting an extension for their special permit application, because as part of that, they needed to get some further information into it, so we asked, asked that to be put on hold. And then on February eighth, the applicant, uh, submitted an email requesting to withdraw his special permit application and proceed with the ZVA appeal. He informed us he didn't wanna go ahead with the, with the information that, that we had, uh, requested, so he asked her to, um, to, uh, withdraw the special permit and to move ahead with the, um, uh, the appeal. So, a little bit more history on the applicant and in the area. Uh, the applicant also owned the adjacent property at Twenty-One Pinnacle Ridge Road. Uh, on November first of twenty eighteen, so roughly two, two years ago, the applicant was issued a cease and desist order for, for clearing in the ridgeline along the, uh, rear of the property. They had just recently purchased a property in October, and then they were doing some clearing, uh, in December. So, the cease and desist order included copies of both the ridgeline protection, uh, notification for their specific properties, at both Twenty-One and the, uh, and the vacant parcel that we're talking about now, along with a copy of the town plan and zoning, uh, regulations for the ridgeline protection. So, so that they issued a cease and desist along with a copy of the regulations that states what you can and can't do in the, uh, in the, uh, ridgeline protection zone. Next slide. Uh, the owner appealed that cease and desist based on the fact that, fact that they had just purchased the property and were unaware of the, uh, of the, of, uh, regulations. On December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, the ZVA appealed, sorry, on, on December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, the zoning board of appeals rules to deny his appeal. And then the, and, and, and then the owner appealed the, uh, ZVA ruling to the New Britain Superior Court. And then on April third, twenty nineteen, the owner submitted a special permit application for selective clearing, selective timbering, and replanting within the ridgeline protection zone. And then on June twenty-fourth, uh, of twenty nineteen, the TPZ approved a special permit application and restoration plan for cutting along the ridgeline. Um, the town's position on this is, uh, is very, uh, intricate here, it's, uh, according to the Connecticut General Statute, Section Eight dash One, the double A, um, it defines the trap rock ridge and ridgeline setback area included in that definition is Rattles Lake Mountain in Farmington. Um, the, uh, the state statutes also allow municipalities to have regulations establishing development restrictions on the trap rock ridge, and Section Eight dash Two is more or less just saying that, again, it's a trap rock ridge, and the regulation defines what the town can and can't do in terms of ridgeline and setback areas. Um, Lot Eighty-Six Fifty-Five Pinnacle Ridge is located on Rattles Lake Mountain and within the ridgeline setback area. Uh, in it, in our per- in our, uh, opinion, the work with, the work conducted was not, one, an emergency, which is allowed under the regulations, two, it wasn't a non-conforming use that was there in existence prior to the effective date of the, uh, of the regulations, and it, and it was not selective timbering, grazing of domestic animals, and passive recreation, which is also allowed under, uh, regulations. The applicant contends the following, that the wood chips he placed on the property are not, uh, considered fill. Um, at, under Section Twenty-Six dash A of the, uh, of the zoning, um, uh, regulations, it defines earth changes as the removal, the excavation, the deposition, processing, or grading of stone, fill, or other earth material, and that's what I've highlighted, is the other earth material, regardless of the method utilized regarding blasting, crushing, or excavation, uh, equipment. He's also contending that the water discharging from a town, um, storm drainage outlet, and I'll show you in some, uh, photos com- coming up of where that is in relation to the, uh, uh, the wood chips. But the, uh, he, uh, he says that the drainage is, is eroding the channel along the slope as a result of inadequate maintenance of the discharge and necessitating the need for the fill. So, he's saying that the, the water is causing the, uh, slope to erode, and he needed to put these wood chips in to actually fill it in and, uh, protect the property. An inspection of the area was, was performed on January seventh, twenty twenty-one, and it was determined by town staff that the erosion of the channel had not been causing erosion of the nearby slope, requiring the importation and installation of fill along the embankment. Next slide. Uh, also, that was with the, we just went over the, uh, ridgeline setback, also, uh, we have a, uh, regulation, uh, Section Twenty-Four, which states that the placement of more than a hundred cubic yards of fill material upon a parcel of land shall require approval from the commission, except where such activity is undertaken in conjunction with the site plan, development plan, or subdivision of plan approved by the commission, which, which he doesn't have any, either, any of these. Uh, going back to the ridgeline protection zone definition, earth change is defined as follows, means the removal, excavation, deposition, processing, or grading of stone, fill, or other earth material, regardless of the method utilized. Emergency work is defined as work that is necessary to protect life or property. Emergency work shall include but not be limited to the removal or trimming of dead or dangerous trees. Prior to the convention of such activity, a plan for conducting all emergency work shall be submitted to and be approved by the planning department. And then, uh, selective timbering is defined as the harvesting of not more than ten percent of the trees, not less than six inches in diameter, at breadth height, within the ridgeline setback area on a lot for commercial sale of lumber. And, uh, selective timbering requires the work be done monitored by a registered forester certified by the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection. And B, prior to convention such activity, a plan is prepared by a registered forester for the work and shall be filed with the Farmington Planning, uh, Department. Oh, we're back up on these. Here's some pictures I, I taken. Uh, the one on the left is from November nineteenth of twenty eighteen, that was, uh, right around the first of violation, but, uh, what you can see with that pointing to, that's approximately where the vacant lot is, you can see that some trees, bench trees. Picture on the right is the same, same spot I took the picture, and that was from December twenty-second of, uh, of last year, and you can see where it's a little thinner in, in that area.
Yep.
Um, here's some pictures I had taken of the, uh, area. This was on the day that I, we first went out to the, uh, to, uh, take a look at the problem, and you could see the pile of, uh, wood chips there. Uh, the town storm drainage head wall is to the left right there, Shannon, thank you. There's the head wall outlet, and then that swale flows right through there, along there, and then goes, actually goes over the ridge down the embankment. All right, you can see as I panned over a little bit, over the left or over the right, you can see where the ridgeline is up in there, and then, and then you can see where the, uh, storm, uh, dr- uh, swale just kinda flows along and goes over the ridge. These are some pictures I took when I met with Mr. Uh, Tijerian, uh, on the property, and, uh, this is looking mostly at the, almost like at the head wall of the storm drainage outlet, looking out towards the, towards the, uh, the ridgeline. You can see the, uh, the wood chip fill on the left, you can see some tree stumps that were cut. The, what you're seeing on the ground is some dead trees and stuff, that was, some of that wasn't cut as part of the project. And, uh, and then on the right one is, I just panned over a little bit more, and you can see where that swale kinda goes through and meanders right over the ridge. Here's some more pictures, you can see the trees that were cut, you can see the trees that are buried up towards the top in there. Um, pan over to the right a little bit more, you can see, see some more of the fill. Uh, the ridgeline is pretty clear as it comes up along the edge, and you can see it right up in there. There's the, uh, on the left is a picture of the storm drainage outlet compared to where the fill was placed, all right? There, there's the pipe right in there. Next. And then this is the swale that comes out of the, uh, out of the pipe flows along the ridge, and on the right, it kicks back over to the right, and that's where it goes right over the ridge. And the fill pile is on, is on the left, uh, if you want the left photo up in there, yeah. Next photos. Here's some pictures, again, with the Twenty-One Pinnacle Ridge we had taken from Hotchkiss Road. So, again, this was focusing on the Twenty-One Pinnacle Ridge, but they do come into play now that we're looking at the new one. But, but you can see up, up in there, and there's the, uh, fill up in that as well, you can see what looks like possibly something up in there. So, the town's conclusion is resulting in the cease and desist is that the work was conducted and falls clearly under the zoning, uh, regulations, uh, definition for the placement of fill as well as earth, uh, changes. Again, Section Twenty-Four, which is for the fill, states that the placement of more than ten, or, or, sorry, a hundred cubic yards of fill material upon a parcel of land shall require approval from the commission, except where such activity is undertaken in conjunction with a site plan, development plan, or subdivision plan approved by the commission. And then Section Twenty-Six E two has to do with the, um, the ridgeline setback area, and it defines earth changes are required only by a special permit with the planning and zoning, uh, commission. And again, that has to do with processing, uh, or deposition of materials, um, or other earth materials on the property. So, the property does not have commission approval for fill or a special permit for earth changes, therefore, we feel the cease and desist was issued, was issued appropriately. Based on that, I'll take any questions or if you wanna move on to the next.
When you say moving on to the next, are you, do you, why don't you present your entire, make your entire presentation, and then we'll open it up for- make your entire presentation, and then we'll open it up for questions rather than separating it into two separate issues?
No, I apologize. I'm all set. If you wanted to move over to, uh, to Turgian next, I apologize.
Well, people might have questions of you. So I just want to make sure, do you have any, are you, do you have any other, um, information or, uh, or witnesses that you intend to call Mr. Seer?
I don't have any witnesses at, at this time.
Okay. And the PowerPoint presentation that you just presented, is that now part of the official record? Is it part of the file, Shannon?
Uh, it, it will be now that it's been part, so it'll be part of the recording, and yes, we will make it part of the record.
Okay. So I'm going to ask members of the commission if they have any questions of Mr., uh, Seer, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Turjanian if he has any questions of Mr. Seer. So let's start with the commission members. Anyone have any questions right now? Mr. Callahan?
I'd like to hear Mr. Turjanian's presentation before I ask my questions.
Fair enough. Mr. Carrier?
I have a couple of questions. Um, Mr. Seer, when you were out there, uh, you showed some pictures of some trees that were cut. Can you be a little more specific on the size or the number of trees, maybe the type? I know it's be tough, but just to elaborate a little bit more on that point, please.
I don't, I did not do, I didn't have the time at that point to do a full, um, uh, study of all the trees like we did the last time where we had tape measure and we looked at them all. But, um, I want to say there probably was a handful of trees cut and by a handful, let's say like under five possibly. Um, but there was also some trees that were buried, um, well above the, well above the base of the trunk, so therefore they're just going to be choked out soon and die. Uh, trees ranged anywhere from probably four inches in diameter to probably 12 inches in diameter.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question, uh, this is, is this considered a lot of record? And could someone pull a building permit on this lot at any time? And if so, what, uh, what are the special regulations as far as being on the ridge line, uh, that would be taken into consideration if someone wants to try to pull a building permit?
It is a lot that is part of a subdivision. So technically, yes, he can come in, um, with regards to the construction on that lot. Uh, this lot predated our regulations with the, uh, with the, um, the ridge line. So what happens is if you were to come in today and get a subdivision up on, up on the ridge line, you would be mandated to say 150 feet away from, uh, the setback area. Okay? Or you have 150 foot setback area. Uh, for, 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 for the lot of record, the, uh, the commission allows you to go as little as 75 feet, and that's, and that's if they feel that further, um, uh, further restrictions would actually, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Would actually deter you from any of the building on the property. So in other words, do these regulations make it impossible for you to build on that lot? If so, then you can go as low as 75 feet.
Thank you for that explanation. That, that did answer the question. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Carrier?
Uh, none at this time.
Mr. Llewellyn?
So, uh, my understanding is we've had this applicant do a something in the past. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that was back in 2018. Uh, he had just purchased the property, I think in October, and it was really soon after he had somebody in there clearing some trees. So we went up there, issued a cease and desist, discussed it with them, and, and at that point, it was just a brand new property owner. So that was the problem.
And if I could interject, Mr. Commissioner Llewellyn, I would say that whether or not a, on a different piece of property, there had been a prior cease and desist order is not relevant to our determination of this, uh, appeal. So I, I just note that we would only consider the facts as related to this claim and not to whether or not there were any other different transgressions in the past. I just note that for the record.
Uh, Commissioner Shonhorn, I strongly disagree. Uh, it's relevant, and I believe it. It shows a pattern. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm going to overrule your objection, indicate that we are not to consider, uh, any other transgressions on other property, whether it shows a pattern or not. I just state that for the record, that we're limited in, as I understand this, and I'll turn to, uh, uh, the town staff for, uh, for an opinion on that, if they want, wish to offer it, that we're limited just to this claim and not to whether or not the person was ruled against on another matter of cease and desist in the past. Am I correct?
I, I'll say, yes, um, the relevance, I think, begins and ends with the fact that did the owner know that the property was in the ridge line protection area? And to that, uh, because of the past history, we can state with 100% certainty, uh, that they did know that the property was within site protection. And I think that's where the relevance begins and ends.
I understand. Okay. I, and, and I don't disagree with that. Um, moving on to Commissioner Brockelman, do you have questions?
Yeah, I just have one quick one. I think maybe if it's a clarification, when you said that some smaller trees were, I think you said they were buried, is that when they put the wood chips in, that whatever they did going down the hill, that, uh, that covered over some trees?
Um, no, I, I don't, I didn't see any buried trees in terms of cut trees that were buried. But what I did see is a, a live tree that was up, and it had, let's say, a foot, two feet, three feet, whatever, of, of, of material above the base ground, which eventually chokes, which eventually choked out the tree.
Yep, okay, yep. That's what I meant. So it covered it, and it basically, it, it buried it alive.
Yes.
Okay. That was all I had, Chairman.
All right. And, uh, Miss, Commissioner Walsh, any questions?
Uh, no, my questions have been asked. I'm good at this point.
All right. Mr. Seer, I just have a couple of questions that I was hoping you could address. I'm going to ask the same questions of Mr. Turjanian, but, um, it's the claim that under, uh, under engineering, uh, definitions, that earth changes or, or more specifically, earth material does not include things such as mulch and wood chips. Would you just address that for a minute as to whether or not the, uh, those for, for engineers and, and, uh, land use engineers applies in this situation?
The, uh, the claim was that wood chips are not considered fill. Uh, to get, to get, to get, not to get technical into there, the, uh, the, the earth, the, the regulations are clear that any earth changes in the ridge line protection zone requires a special permit. And the definition of earth changes is when you're grading, filling, or other, or using, or filling of other earth materials. So my, my contention is that earth material, wood chips is an earth material, and therefore it is, uh, a special permit was, was, uh, required.
Well, if I could follow up on that, if you look at what's up on the screen right now, isn't the word fill even separate from, in other words, it's a type of earth material, but it's got its own, the term fill is by itself, or other earth material in the definition of earth changes, correct?
Yes. And like I said, it says, because it says the processing or grading of, um, fill or, sorry, uh, for, for, uh, sorry, uh, processing or, or grading of stone, one, fill, second, or other earth material, third, regardless of the method you used.
All right. And, and again, I'll have Mr. Turjanian address that as well. There were a couple of questions asked of you about the tree cutting. This, uh, this cease and desist order did not apply to, uh, trees, did it, in this particular, uh, cease and desist order that we're here for? Cutting?
No, because at that point, I, no, because at that point, I didn't realize the trees had been cut.
Right. So that would not be part of the appeal that was filed in this case, correct? If there's going to be any claim, it has to be a separate cease and desist order, right?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. And, um, I, I just also want to be clear for the members of the commission, where you see the word deposition in the definition, deposition is a form of the word deposit or depositing, correct? That's the meaning here. When we talk about depositing of fill, that's what deposition means here. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Um, there was also some issues about the, um, erosion caused by the storm drain and some suggestion that was caused by the town's action. Could you, I know that you addressed that briefly, but can you just explain that, why that's, the town, uh, storm drain and discharge does not affect the cease and desist order that you issued in this case?
From my, uh, personal viewing of that and, and, and working with, uh, uh, storm drainage outlets and doing inspections of these for many, many years, uh, I did not feel that that was causing any detrimental effects. That, uh, that system was installed when those lots were first, uh, approved as part of the, uh, subdivision. And forgive me, I don't have it in front of me, but I want to say it was the 70s, I think. Um, so it's been going almost 50 years plus. And from wide inspection out there, all, all you can see, and even from the pictures, it's a very minor, uh, channel through there. It's not a very large drainage area that drains to it. Um, so his contention and, and definitely he could, he could, he could, uh, elaborate on this with, and from what I've understood is that the, uh, that the water was eroding the channel and thereby causing his property to undermine, causing it to actually start to shift. And that's why he had to put that fill in there to prevent losing that slope from his, uh, his property. But as you can see, or from what I, go ahead, sorry.
Your, I was going to ask you, your conclusion with regard to that allegation is what?
Is that it's false, because, uh, the, the erosion within that channel, or the water in that channel is confined to a very small area, and let's say it's a foot, two, two feet wide, three feet at the max, let's say, you know? And it, and it does not, it's kind of not causing the, the, um, the adjoining property to undermine and to slide in, so.
Right. And, um, Section 24 talks about that if there's more than 100 cubic yards of material, that it requires a, uh, a special permit. Can you, how do you know it was more, it's more than 100 cubic yards of, of wood chips?
I've done some quick, uh, uh, calculations on it, and just from visually, I, you can see it, but, uh, but, but doing some quick, uh, calculations, I'm definitely in excess of like 200 yards. So, and that's being, and that's being a little, uh, conservative on his end. I mean, there's, there could be up, up to as much as 300 yards. So it all depends on getting some, uh, good guys.
And for our benefit, and when you talked about triaxle, triaxle dump trucks, how much, uh, how many cubic yards of wood chips would you estimate is in one triaxle dump truck?
You can get up to 20 yards in a dump truck.
Okay.
You know?
Yep.
And that, and that all depends on how it was filled, the size of the dump truck, but let's assume 20 yards.
Okay. And then my final question has to do with, you, you issued a cease and desist order in this case for him to stop doing what he's doing. Is there, what's the next step? Assuming that we affirm your decision, you, you have not, uh, sought a fine, you have not sought any kind of remediation. What would, what is your recommendation, or what would you be recommending if we were to affirm your decision?
Well, there have been no fines issued because there was an appeal that was filed within the 10 days after. So, so, so we have, we actually suspended any kind of fine while, 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 while this plays through, uh, the process. So the, the options he has after this is the one is to remove the fill, or two, to get a special permit and approval from the, uh, from the, uh, planning and zoning, uh, commission. It would, it would be my recommendation that if, if he does, if this is, that if it is affirmed and a special permit is not filed, then we would move for, for fines at this point.
Fines or what? Removal? I mean, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to think what.
He has to have it, you know, he has no permit for that stuff, for any of that material to be there. So his options are to, one, is to remove it, or two, to get it approved. So if the cease and desist is affirmed in this, in, in this case, then cease and desist was issued properly. So at, so at that point, he has to make those two, uh, decisions. If it is, if a, if a special permit is not approved, or, you know, at this point, he's going to have to reapply, because I'm almost positive, I think they, uh, they actually, uh, gave him back his application and his check. So he would have to reapply for a special permit. So, um, with that being the case, um, if a special permit is not filed, then, then I would move to recommend to the town planner that we, uh, issue fines at this point, dating back to when the incident happened.
So, so they would be, you're saying to me retroactive fines? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I felt it wasn't, I didn't think, it does say in the cease and desist that if this continues or if it is not removed, then fines will be issued. So, well, the way I'm at it at this point is that, um, you know, I don't think it was in good conscience to issue fines to some, to someone that is currently appealing, uh, a decision. Because in this case, the decision, if you guys up, do not uphold the cease and desist, then all those fines were issued in a, in the error.
I, oh, I understand. I understand. All right. Um, does any other commissioner have questions before I ask Mr. Turjanian if he has questions of Mr. Seer?
I, I actually, uh, John, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions if I can.
Of course. Please.
So, uh, Mr. Seer, uh, did at any time prior to the complaint, did the, uh, let's say, uh, Mr. Turjanian come to you and, or the town and ask about the erosion problem on that storm drainage?
Oh.
Oh my God, you want right?
No.
Okay. If you're not speaking, please, uh...
Yeah, please, please mute your microphone if you're not speaking. All right. Mr. Turjanian, did you hear the question? I mean, sorry, Mr. Seer?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, did you hear?
No, no, I just never got out, I, I never received a phone call or an email or anything asking about, or asking us to come, uh, take a look at the problem and, uh, to see what was going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Does any other commissioner have any follow-up questions before I ask Mr. Turjanian?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Turjanian, are you still there?
I'm still here, yes.
All right. Um, I'm going to have you first identify your, yourself by name and address, and, um, and then would you also, just for the record, explain your capacity, I assume it's representative capacity for Ms. Stefanic, just so that we're clear that you're acting on her behalf here?
Correct. Uh, good evening. My name is Harry Turjanian, 36 Summer Street, West Hartford. Um, I represent Tracy Stefanic. And, uh, before I turn to the forensic engineer, Tony Centrelli for the presentation, I'd like to make some key points. Uh, there's a lot of background noise. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. There is a lot of background noise. I don't know where it's coming from, so, uh, hopefully everyone is muted, so it would limit that. I'm going to mute myself too. But, uh, do you have any questions of Mr. Seer that you wish to ask through me?
I do. Uh, Mr. Seer pointed out that, uh, that the tree stumps that he showed in the picture and pointed out, those tree stumps were not from that property. But he said that the tree stumps that the company dropped off long with the, with the wood chips, so they, he was 50, minimum of 50 feet away. He never came close up and looked, identified those treatments as being from that property. Definitely in no shape or form, those were from the property. As you can see, the sizes are very large. Those trees did not grow in that area. Um, that was an assumption he made, um, he has, clearly, it's not from that property. I, I want to make that now. I, I wanna make that now first, elaborate. What facts does he have that it's from that property? Because they're not even the same type of tree from that property, not even the same size. They're, they're very small.
All right. Mr. Turjanian, I, I understand your question. Mr. Seer, can you answer that question? He says that those trees do not appear to be growth from that location. Were you able to determine whether it was cuts from that location or from somewhere else? If you wouldn't mind responding.
Chairman Schoenhorn, Chairman Schoenhorn.
Yes.
Point of matter. It's not a discussion here. He's supposed to be presenting his side.
No, 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 no. You're, you're out of order, Mr. Llewellyn. This is a hearing of an appeal and it's done differently than a variance. It's not one side versus the other. He's allowed to ask questions of the town presenter through the chair. That's in our bylaws.
Okay, sir.
All right. So, Mr. Seer, do you wanna just answer the, the question that Mr. Turjanian raised?
There were a ver, uh, you know, a various of some small trees and some larger trees that had been cut. Uh, yes, we, he had, he mentioned that it didn't get anywhere near 50 feet, but when him and I walked it on the 7th of January, uh, we walked up and down that slope. We were up on top of the wood chip slope and that's where I saw the trees that, that were buried, um, the large, uh, uh, trees that were actually buried at, at the base of the trunk. But I think if you zoom in on some of my pictures, you'll see, uh, those, yeah, that's probably, let's see, go back to the other ones, I think. Right there, I think that one on the left there, oh, right there, right, that thing, that, that looked like one of the trees as well. Um, and I think in the slope, there were some trees that were actually cut, some of the smaller trees.
Are you referring to the photographs that are identified as January 7th, 2021 in the material?
Can you please, can you please put it to the picture before? Because if you look at that stump, that is not the size of any tree in that neighborhood in that area. That is not from the property. You can see the size difference between that stump and all the other trees. There's a difference in size.
Right. Mr. Turjanian, in order to facilitate this hearing, if you have a question, we ask it of Mr. Seer and he'll answer, and then you can go on to your next, uh, question. But you can't debate with Mr. Seer. The issue-
No, no, I'm not debating. I just wanna point out because it's reference to the question I'm asking before he changes the picture. I just want you to go back to that picture so he himself could see that that tree is about five times larger than any tree in that area. So that is definitely not from that property. That was dropped off by the company dropping off the wood chips. You can see the difference. I just wanted to point out that before the picture went away.
Are, are we talking, Mr. Turjanian, are you referring to the same photograph? We're all looking at the two that are dated January 7th, 2021?
Right. And then you have the icon that's circling that stump right there. You see the size of that stump?
Yeah.
The tree surrounding, none of those trees are that big. So that stump, that is not from that property. And Bruce has no evidence that that stump is from that property because it's not. Uh, that's a much larger tree that was dropped off by the wood chip company off their truck that they had cut somewhere else. That's all I'm gonna point out.
Okay. Do you have any other questions of Mr. Seer?
Nate, you talking about Harry?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Turjanian, do you have any other question-
Yes, yes, I do.
-of Mr. Seer? I don't think his first name is Harry. Bruce Seer. So I've just talked about the right person here.
You want, okay, you want me to follow up with another question?
Do you have questions of him before you present your own, uh, what you wanna say?
Definitely.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Seer, to the property, came across from another property onto this property to witness and to have the meeting with me. Now, while he was crossing through that property, did he notice any other neighborhoods? Seer cutting their properties? Cause that's my question, cause every house has been clear cut. He seems to always find his way to 21 Pinnacle Ridge Road. So did, did he notice anything while he was walking through those other properties? And why he didn't notice any of that?
Well, I'm gonna rephrase the question of Mr. Seer because we're only dealing with the cease and desist order and your appeal and not whether other people who live or own property along the ridge have also violated. So, Mr. Seer, uh, during the course of your going to that, uh, property to do a site inspection, did you observe any other, uh, uh, clear cutting that violated, in your view, the cease and desist order and that, I'm sorry, that violated the ridge protection, uh, regulations of the town?
No, I did not see any of them.
Okay. Do you have another question, Mr. Turjanian?
Yes. Um, question I had was that not all facts were presented in his presentation, which I'll, in my, in my presentation, uh-
You, you will be allowed to ask, trust me, you can say whatever you want in your presentation. I'm asking if you have questions. It's not really cross-examination. We're not a legal board, we're not a, um, a court. So my question is, are there any things that you wanted to ask Mr. Seer to help make a point you wanted to make?
Right. Okay, let me look through my notes real quick because he covered a lot of information.
Right.
Yes, I do. Has he visited any of the neighbors and their properties as far as the clear cutting? Has he inquired to them that, you know, he's doing investigation on 21 Pinnacle Ridge Road? He walked any of the, any one of those homes under the wind line? Whether it be on, uh, Pinnacle Ridge or Pinnacle Road? Did he investigate any single property besides 21 Pinnacle Ridge Road?
You mean during the time when he was investigating your property?
Correct. At any point, did he take it upon himself to see if anyone else has cut trees in any single one of those neighborhoods?
Well, I, I don't think that is an appropriate question, but I think that it would be fair to ask, Mr. Seer, whether or not in the course of your investigating the, uh, the violations that you were investigating, whether you observed any tree cutting in the vicinity of this property?
That's fair enough. That's fair.
No, I, no, I did not. But for the record, I will state that we are working with other property owner for a violation in that area as well.
Okay.
So I've got two, uh, in that same vicinity that I'm working on as, as we speak, and it's a possible third we're not sure about, so it's a, uh, it's a never-ending game of, of trying to, uh, deal with one and then you move into the next one, so.
All right. Did that answer your question, Mr. Turjanian?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
All right. Do you have any other questions? And again, I'm not gonna limit your presentation, but I wanted to make sure you didn't need to follow up with Mr. Seer.
At this point, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there, uh, do you present any evidence yourself? Do you wanna put in any exhibits, um, or any other information? Please feel free to do so at this time.
Thank you. I don't at this point, but I do wanna speak about it.
Absolutely.
Now, before I turn it over to forensic engineer Tony Centrelli for the presentation, um, I'm gonna talk about a few things. Um, Bruce Seer extensively covered for the last two years and he tried to point out a pattern. I was actually surprised, one of the both commissioner members accused of a pattern and unfair. I felt that was very unfair without hearing the facts on both sides. He made an assumption that there's a pattern that were happening. Um, Bruce forgot to mention a lot of the facts. Uh, it was a one, one-sided, uh, presentation, obviously. And, and again, I'm surprised that commissioner did that comment. Now, let's get to the beginning of, uh, 2018. We didn't lose that case. We settled on that case. We compromised to make this thing go away for both sides. Uh, the town gave a lot, we gave a lot, and we came to a compromise with no means that we give in or that we violate anything. We never agreed that we violate anything. I wanna make sure it's clear because Bruce stated that we lost the case. We didn't lose the case. Um, as far as a pattern, there is certainly no pattern happening. And I'll tell you why. Uh, we went to the website and looked to see if there's anything on tree cutting, whether we needed a permit or we needed any paperwork. There's no mention of the, any permits required. We took a step further. We went to town hall, Tracy Stefanic and I. We went to, to the counter of, I believe is the engineering, and we asked for them to pull the plot plan for this property, 21 Pinnacle Ridge specifically. We pulled it out and we stated to the ladies there that we are going to tree cut in this area. Do we need a special permit? Do we need anything? Did we let the town know? They said no, clearly said no. So we weren't hiding anything. We weren't trying to pull anything on anyone. Um, we were told, oh, you don't have to do any special thing. You don't need approval. You don't need to cut as easily as you want. Now, I went home and I called the following week to make sure, even on a phone call, I talked to different, and they asked if I could tr, cut the trees. Do I need a special permit? Again, this was no. So we didn't do it intentionally. We did it innocently. Um, you know, I wanna portray that because in the presentation, that, those facts were left out as if we did it knowingly. That, that was not the case. Now, as far as the erosion, clearly there, there's a, this whole problem started with erosion. There was clear evidence of erosion on that property. That area is outdated. It was built, I believe, like Bruce said, mentioned 15 years ago, I believe, 1961 or '62. That area was designed that way. It's completely outdated. It's eroding the, the soil completely down the hill. That's why you see a drop in size. If you look at the neighboring properties, both of them are much, much higher than, than the property that we're talking about. There's a good reason for that. The reason is we have an erosion problem, um, which I pointed out to Bruce and he said there's a couple of ways we could fix that erosion problem. One is to basically bring the erosion pipe outlet closer to the road, which he stated would cost over $75,000. The town is not prepared to make that kind of commitment. Now, in my understanding, the town is responsible for the maintenance, upkeeping, and bringing it up to date. I have not seen the town or at all in my, in my presence there or any signs that any improvements were made. It's the town's obligation to correct that problem. My idea was to put the wood chips there to make it look better, a levelier, improves that neighborhood, controls the erosion and improves it dramatically. If anything's improving, it will not be ripping that property whatsoever. Um, Bruce, Bruce indicated and acknowledged the problem that, that he said the town is not gonna pay that kind of amount to correct that erosion problem. Now, I'd like to see comments as far as what the town can do to fix that problem. In my view, I thought the wood chip would help slow down the erosion and help that situation. Now, um, getting back to, I know, I asked a question to Bruce, but you said I could elaborate on that. Uh, when Bruce walked over from the property next door to this property, he tripped over some cut trees. Those are clearly not from this property. That was from the property right next door, which he mentioned nothing about. You seem to only concentrate on that property alone. Now, wood chips is never mentioned in the town website. It's not, I looked at other town websites and clearly they indicate if, if there's a product or ingredient they don't want used, they clearly specify it. Now, the way Bruce put it, he's expecting us to believe wood chips is mentioned. It's nowhere in the Tompkins booklet, doesn't mention wood chips at all. It, it's, it's not mentioned. It cannot be used as a, as a fill whatsoever. No engineer in, 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 in this state, I believe, has used wood chips as a fill recommending that. So the definition is very clear, wood chips is not a fill by any means. It's just, it's just, uh, for landscaping purposes. And in this case, we're just trying to control erosion and apply towards leveling a little bit, so it looks better. I'm looking over my notes to make sure what's underneath there. You know, we feel we're treated unfairly, obviously. Um, if anyone, you don't even have to be an engineer or a zoning official, you could walk or drive through the entire ridge line, every single house is clear cut. Clearly, there's no, there's no debate about that. So I'd like to be treated fairly alongside all those neighbors, you know? Just cause the last name's different, we don't wanna be treated differently. I'm gonna turn it over to Tony Centrelli, forensic engineer. This way he could go, give his professional view on this whole stuff. Tony, are you there?
I am here.
I'm all set at this point.
All right. If you're gonna speak, uh, you, do you have a, a person who wants to speak on your behalf here?
Yes, Tony Centrelli is the forensic engineer that represents Tracy Stefanic.
Okay. So, Mr. Centrelli, would you please identify yourself and your address for the record, please, and your title?
All right, I'm Anthony Centrelli. I live in, uh, Hollywood Boulevard in Weathersfield, and I'm a professional-
We, we've lost you, sir. Are you speaking? I, I can't hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
I said, um, Anthony Centrelli, I'm a professional engineer and I live in Weathersfield, Connecticut.
All right. Go ahead. Either through Mr. Turjanian or your own presentation, please state, uh, what you have to say. And if Mr. Turjanian wants to ask you questions, he has the right to do that as well.
Oh, sure, sure. I was asked to, uh, he asked me over to the property. I looked at it, um, after he got the, the cease and desist order and I said, please, Harry, you gotta, it's the wood chips, you gotta, you gotta spread out here. And he's like, well, I can't touch them. And I'm like, what do you mean you can't touch them? So he showed me that, he originally got a cease and desist to, um, to stop importing them, the wood, the wood chip. And then it also included, uh, no earthwork, which I said, well, how is he gonna do anything if he can't spread them out? Two days later, I got, he showed me and I said, not only did the town kinda scratch their head and say, hey, we're gonna stop them from importing and then stopping the earthwork, now we're gonna make it really hard for them because you can't move any of that either. Ah, we got, so that's my impression of, of the second, of the, of the second certified bales that he had is somebody, somebody said, well, we're not even gonna let him remove the stuff. We're gonna stop him from doing that as well. So I think that the intention was, uh, if he was allowed to move them, he, he, he made up, just said, I put too much, I'm sorry, and, and taken something away. To be, that was a bad faith thing.
Excuse me, I'm gonna interrupt you. We can't hear you because you're, you're fading in and out and we need to make a full record. So for last part, could you just repeat your last sentence or two and try to speak either closer or further away from your microphone so that we can hear you better?
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, I think that the, um, the, the two cease and desists didn't allow him to, you know, to either spread the stuff out or move it or remove it. And I thought that was, I thought that was a kind of a, 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 put it, put him in a bind. So then I, then I said to him, I said, well, what is the, what is the actual, what's the actual problem? And it was, uh, section 24 and 26.
We can't hear you, sir. You, you just made it out again. You said to him what? I, I lost you.
I, I asked him, I said, well, what was the issue with, with this is not even fill? This is wood chips. And, and he agreed that it's just wood chips to flatten out the lawn so he can take a soccer ball around or something. So I said, I looked at the definitions of section 24 and section 26, and it, it does talk about, um, fill and, and, and no construction. And I wrote a letter and, and asked back and I said, and no things of building codes, engineering, construction, is fill wood chips. They're, they're not connected. And, and, uh, I sent the letter in, I'm sure it printed a record of, of my- I'm sure it printed a record of my explanation about the true definition of fill. Then there was some other stuff that went on. You guys heard the backstory there. So I wrote the second letter. And that second letter talked about. The second one discussed, again, with Bruce himself, even Sarah, Mr. Shear actually saying herself that wood chips are not considered structural fill. And there's somebody who have to make a note of where wood chips are placed. And that's about the same reason. There's leaves. People put leaves in piles. People put debris, which you normally do. How on earth are you going to track wood chips? Now, I understand this is the original protection area. The definitions of the heat that's referenced, that's referenced 24 and 26. 24 just simply says fill material. And my letter addresses that it's not, it's not fill. It's just, it's just earth, it's landscaping. That brings me, and throughout the whole process here, I've heard the word earth material, sand, stone, gravel, earth material. Sand, stone, gravel, earth material. Section 22 talks about earth excavation. And I'm referencing the reference be the, what is, I want to get the proper name. The document that has all the sections.
I'm sorry, we lost you at the last sentence or two. You need to either speak closer to your microphone or at the same distance. We just lost what you said.
I'm doing everything you're asking. I'm four inches from my microphone.
Okay, I can hear you now. Please, go ahead.
So the, the, what do you call that town document? I want to get the proper name. What is the document that has those 100 pages in it?
The zoning regulations.
Oh, the zoning regulations. When I look at zoning regulations, and if I can have people look, if you have, if you have it available there, all of, I identified in my preparation for this, all of the sections that reference the word earth material. And believe it or not, part of the actual regulations separate earth material from organic material. There's this specific references to organic material and earth. They are totally separate in your own regulations. And this is, what is, what is he defining as fill? This is not fill as wood chips, however. Organic material. If you look at page 92, it specifically says the difference between earth material and organic material. The living paper detected that. That's clarification that it is a difference between earth material and organic material. You look at all of the landscaping stuff in the regulations. It talks about loam. It talks about soil. It talks about, sorry, it's about mulch. Talks about, I guess, everything you expect on a land, sod, loam, mulch, topsoil, burn. It's all listed in landscaping section 30, quite clearly that it's regarding organic material. And if you look at other areas that are specific, like, going back to section 22, this talks about earth excavation. That specifically says sand, stone, gravel. It also identifies loam, peat and peatbox. And that's very specific. It identifies two groups of stuff. It identifies earth material and organic material. Going through all that, we'll look straight back into the original protective stuff and the placement of fill stuff, section 24 and section 26. It says fill material. It's not fill material. They're going through the original. There's an earth change definition that he brought up. In within the confines of earth stage, of earth change definition, it lists stone, other earth materials, again, specifically to a group of earth material. So again, I had, I said to Harry, I said, none of this is earth material. None of this is fill. I'll be on your side, Harry, as an engineer to identify the definitions, engineering definitions, building code definitions, the definitions of the industry and the definitions laid out in the legal document, which is the loam, the regulation. Nothing in there says this is fill. And that's, that's really the whole idea between me being involved with Harry. And it's wood chip stuff. It's wood chip. Laid on, and if you stood, if you had the opportunity to stand where the residence is and you look across the lawn, it's nice and flat. I had produced for Harry a little topographical thing when he was asked, well, where are you going to put the wood chips? Where, how far are the wood chips? One of the documents was, it was the most simplest, easiest thing I could have produced is, I took the topographical map that the town has and used it to say, hey, we're just extending this a little farther. And that's the only thing I would ask. If you can bring up that little map, I can show you. The second part of this is, yeah, that's right there. That page, those blue lines are about as simple and rudimentary as something you may show, moving the contours, I don't know, 20 feet or so. And if you look right where the, there's a catch basin runoff is the city's slum outlet. On both sides, my blue lines and the neighbor's contour lines are almost exactly equal. It's like a butterfly. Whereas that property line or, sorry, the storm drain line is the center of the butterfly. The wing to the other property contours that make a kind of U shapes pointing towards the rain. And these blue contour lines. So that's, that's basically the simplest way to say. You could use to kind of spread the wood chips out in a flat location just so that in an empty lot, you can, you know, you don't have to go looking for the softball or looking for the, you know, the soccer ball. Just to simply put wood chips on the level. I can't remember how many, how many little shrubs, bushes were there before the wood chips went down. And I don't know which, which trees, because I wasn't privy to that. My whole purpose of being involved with Harry is to say that it's quite clear in terms of all the other places in the regulations, that fill and wood chips are not the same thing. And that's, that's the whole reason. It's just, the whole purpose of this is the, is section 24 and section 26 aren't, aren't. He's in accordance. He didn't do anything wrong in accordance with section 24 or section 26. This whole thing with the certified letters and everything else is, is not bad. And that's, that's my viewpoint as an engineer, the terminology used to define this.
Okay. Is there anything else this, at this point, you wish to tell us, Mr. Santorelli?
No, no, I'm just there for the, for the wood chip and, and, oh, I did, yes. And one of my first letters, when, before this whole thing got, got, I had put, I had asked Harry, is it okay if I put inside the letter, if you want to spread it out a little bit more, lower it a foot or two, you know, just to make it up, make it a little more pleasing? And then maybe the city will say, hey, yeah, well, you know, you're a little too zealous with the wood chip. So I put it there. Hey, maybe, maybe put some, you know, a little bit of silicate while you're shuffling around the wood chips. Put the silicate chips, one or two chips down to the hill. But other than, the wood chips are wood chips. It's, I can't, I can't offer any more than trying to define that aspect.
And I'm not going to ask questions myself yet, but would you just identify for the record? You're, you're a professional engineer, is that correct?
Yes.
What, what kind of, of professional engineer? What is your specialty?
Oh, my, my discipline is civil.
Okay. Are you more structural or what is your, what, what kind of work do you do in your professional work?
What I, I spent, well, I spent the first 10 or 15 years of my career on like, foreign project, Indian's landing, the science, water break, shore plant, you know, 100 million dollar project. I walk around with a nuclear density gauge, you know, testing compacted fill. That's the definition. You have to have a specialist on these large sites. You fill things of, you know, six inches or a foot at a time. You make sure they're compacted because they have special, it has special compaction rates. Now, since you have to, again, wood chips are impossible to do that, but they're not considered fill. After I had done that for like 15 years, the last 15 years, I'm now doing forensic stuff where, say, an attorney or an insurance company or client, anyone, client, say, we need clarity. A contractor is proposing a repair of something and a building official is bouncing back and forth with the contract. They get me involved as a disinterested party to review things and say, this is my opinion. And let it go to arbitration and it's resolved through a conglomerate of all the parties, including the work.
And are you retained in this case? Are you, are you hired to give this opinion in this case?
No, I, well, I know, I know Harry, so I told him that I would do.
Okay. Um, do you have anything else? Or I can ask Mr. Turjanian, do you have any additional information you wish to present?
I want to make a correction.
Okay.
In, in the picture, Bruce referred to that as a stump. I apologize, I repeated that in reference to the stump, but that's actually a log. It's not in the ground. It's not, it's not grown. It's just a loose stump that's on the surface.
You're talking about the one that just happened? It looks vertical in the picture, but you're saying it's not a stump?
It's not a stump, no, no. It's not connected or in the ground. It's just a loose stump that the company dropped off. That's what it is. It's not grown on that property.
Okay.
And because of the width, you could tell it's not part of that property. And few points, I want to make small points. Once Bruce contacted us, we've cooperated 100% along the way. We communicated, we've, we've allowed him to come on the property. We've had meetings. We've always cooperated. I want to make sure that's a pattern from, since 19, 2018. So the other thing is, you know, I was impressed, to be honest, Commissioner, at the very beginning, you needed fair and legal obligation of this committee and how you're proud of it. I was very honored, to be honest, and proud that you mentioned something like that. And I just hope this committee looks at all the facts and realizes that, you know, these are just wood chips we're talking about. We had no intentions of, oh, well, we were just trying to prove the property. We did it in good faith. You know, we meant no harm. We're still working with the town to do what's best. But we feel we're right. We feel we're being treated unfairly. That's how we feel. And we, we hope that the committee, committee recognized that. One committee member made a statement about hearing both sides. I really didn't appreciate that. Until you hear both sides, as a commissioner especially, you should hear both sides before you make any accusation as a pattern being formed.
Well, I hope that, Mr. Turjanian, I hope that you understand that, you know, we're a board of laypeople and just because I happen to be a lawyer doesn't mean that, you know, what we consider will be within the confines of our duties and, you know, I mean, but we're, we can hear additional information if it's relevant. And, and what we heard was relevant, I wouldn't concern yourself with, with, with comments. We will be making the decision based on the evidence.
Exactly.
And not anything, any prior, you know, disagreement you may have had with the town.
I agree, I agree. I was just surprised that one of the members mentioned right away without hearing both sides. It just didn't seem fair to me. I wish he had listened to both sides and then made a conclusion based on the facts, not a stunt.
Yeah, I do, with all due respect, I don't think that Commissioner was implying that he had already made up his mind about something. He was asking about whether there was a pattern, which could be a legitimate question to ask. It's just not something that we would be considering the purposes of a decision. But it may be relevant, as the town's assistant planner pointed out, to knowledge that this is a ridge line and therefore there are special protections in the trap rock ridge in Farmington, Avon and all along the entire trap rock from Massachusetts down to close to Long Island Sound. So I think from that perspective, questions in the comments may have been relevant. So I hope you.
And I appreciate your clarification.
Okay. Do you have anything else you wish to present, Mr. Turjanian?
No, that should do it.
Okay, I'm gonna. All right, well, we have probably, some of us have questions and we're going to go in an order. And I'm going to ask, and this is either for you or for Mr. Santorelli. Mr. Callahan, Commissioner Callahan, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, he's coming right back.
Oh.
Sorry, I stepped away for one second.
Mr. Carrier, do you have any questions?
I'm here, I'm back, John.
Oh, then go ahead. Or it's your, you're up.
My, excuse me, my only question would be of the appellant. And that would be, is, are wood chips earth material? What's your position?
Who is the question addressed to, Mr. Turjanian?
To the appellant.
Turjanian, Mr. Turjanian.
That would be more towards the engineer, Tony Santorelli, I believe, if he would define that.
Either or.
Tony, are you available? Because that's your question.
I was waiting for, wood chips enough. I said, every definition of fill is something that.
I didn't ask about fill. I asked, are they earth material?
Earth material? No, that's stuff that comes from earth, gravel, stone, rocks, clay, silt. That's earth. And to give reference again, for clarity, there is that one page. And I have a lot of papers here in front of me. So it's actually clear in your own documents from the town, defining such a way. Yeah. Oh, I'm looking for the exact page. I referenced it earlier. In the, in the, where is, I'll find it. I got too many pages in front of me here. Page 92. And the actual document separates earth material from organic material. And all the organic material is identified straight out in landscaping stuff as mulch and leaves and sod and loam. And all the earth materials are stuff that you can excavate with, like dynamite and rocks and boulders. They're two different things. Fill is, is the only way to do it. Fill it increments and, and have a stable, have a stable and done with. Wood chips are not, they're not construed as fill by anybody's, by anybody's wildest dream.
I understand your answer.
Yep.
And could you just identify which subsection on page 92 you're referring to for the record?
Um, number three and number four on A, part A.
Okay.
Friend of Dead Center, page 92. Talks about earth materials and then it talks about organic materials. And the absence, some, some other multiple areas of your stuff, of the, of the, the code specifically addressed mulch and clay and soil and sod as a continuation of naming what they're trying to describe. The absence of calling wood chips sod, mulch in the, in the earth movement stuff is intentionally not there because it doesn't apply.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Callahan?
It does, Chairman, thank you.
Do you have another question?
I do not.
All right, Mr. Carrier.
Uh, yes, my, my first question is for the town and the town drainage. Is there any easements or anything that exists? This is a subdivision that predates what you said, some of the current zoning. But are there any easements that exist on the property at this time for that drainage?
I guess there is. And if you look on the screen, it's pretty much dashed out in the, the red dash line showing the storm drainage. The storm drainage is in purple, a little circle on the end that's approximately of the outlet. And then the dash red is the easement area.
Okay, thank you. And then my second and final question, along that presentation, maybe I misheard a couple of comments about the purpose of the, I won't call it fill. I'll say the wood chips as a case of this question. But Mr. Santorelli stated something about, you know, having a conversation, the kids playing soccer. But I believe I heard from Mr. Turjanian that, that the wood chips were there for the erosion. Is it one or the other or both? Can you please clarify?
I can, this is Tony. As an engineer, I, I'm not being part of Harry's original thought. I look at it as a continuation of the lawn to match the contours of the existing lawn a little bit farther into the vacant property. It's all I can assume by walking on site and seeing what I saw.
And in my opinion, this is Harry Turgenian, you know, again, we're improving the property. Seeing a hole there, a ditch, that doesn't seem proper. And like Tony said, we're not building it, you know, we're not trying to put a building by no means. That's just the visual looks and erosion, that's the only purpose behind it. There's no other purpose behind it.
Okay, thank you, actually, then, that, a follow-up question. Since the earth here owns both the building lot with the house on it and also the vacant lot to the, to the north. If this was to be one lot, would this change any of the rules or any of the issues as far as tilling or tree cutting or grading of the yard, et cetera? Would that change whether this was part of an existing building lot and joined to the one that has the house or whether it's a vacant lot?
Are you asking Mr. Seer this question?
Yeah, sorry, I, yes, I'm asking Mr. Seer.
Sorry, I apologize, I. Can you repeat that?
Sure, so, right now, as it stands, we have a home on a lot, 21 Pinnacle. And the other lot that's in question is a, just a vacant building lot. If this was a joint lot or just one single lot, would any of the rules change as far as grading, cutting of trees, filling?
No, no, that they would not change.
Okay, thank you. No more questions, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, we can't hear you.
Yeah, no, he's working now.
I think his earbuds matter, we're out of power.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, we got, Mr. Chair will hold.
I'm sorry, but, hold on, it's going to take a second. Okay, now, can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you as well, good, all right. So, Mr. Carrier, did you have another question or no?
Uh, no more further questions.
Okay, Mr. Llewellyn, were you going to ask a question?
No need.
Mr. Brockelman, Commissioner Brockelman?
Yes, um, I, I guess I want a point of clarification and maybe I was mixed up. If Mr. Turgenian can just straighten out with me on the timeline. When you talked about going into Town Hall and asking about cutting trees and that, was that in the initial, right after you purchased the property or was this more recent?
No, that was initial, I'm glad you clarified, that's the initial in 2018 when we purchased. We walked into Town Hall, we specifically pulled out the plot plan for that house and that property and we specifically asked.
Okay, all right, there was, okay, so I wanted to get a clarification whether that was before or after everything was explained, you as a new homeowner.
I appreciate it, and keep in mind that we didn't cut any trees on this property. Those are stumps, not stumps, again, here we go, it's a log, log that the company dropped. And it's, and you can see the width, it's so much bigger than the other trees on that property that we didn't cut any trees. Those are stumps that the company dropped off by mistake. We didn't request those logs to be dropped off.
Yeah, I think if I were purchasing mulch and there were big stumps in there, I might be questioning that myself.
Right.
I don't have any more questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Walsh?
Uh, no questions.
I have a few. Um, and I'm going to ask Mr. Turgenian. I understand your position that placement of fill doesn't include things like tree trunks, mulch, wood chips and whatnot. But do you agree, at least based on your conversations with Mr. Centurelli, that removing of material, as he was describing in section 23 of our regulations, is different than depositing stuff on the land? You at least agree with that?
Well, depending on the purpose, you know, like I told you, my purpose in this case was two reasons. One was erosion to control and there's clear evidence of erosion. And by putting wood chips, and clearly, the town of pamphlet rule regulations does not indicate or talk about wood chips whatsoever as far as being a fill. And no engineer in the state of Connecticut or anywhere could ask any individual or a firm to put wood chips as a fill.
Well, well, let me just ask you this then.
But yes, your question, yes.
Do you agree there's a difference between placing something on property and taking it away?
Yes, it's the same, I agree.
You're saying it's, in your opinion, it's the same or is it different?
Well, depending on the material you're using, what purpose, what you're doing, I think it all plays a key role, I believe. But there's a difference in that, yes, of course, there's a difference.
All right, and of course, you understand that the zoning, I don't know who wrote our zoning regulations initially, but do you agree that it's, that it's not necessarily engineers who wrote the regulations?
No, but if you look at, what I did was, I went to other towns and looked up their regulations. They clearly specify no wood chips, any other, let's say, some sort of material or earthly material, however you categorize it, they actually give the definition of wood chips and how it can be used in that town. This is Farmington, you know, it's not mentioned whatsoever. And if you look at that portion of wood chips, it clearly is not a fill.
Now, did you get a copy? There was a court case that was made part of the record from North Branford. Did you get a chance to look at that?
I looked at that, yes, briefly.
So, you at least agree that at least the town of North Branford, their zoning board of appeals concluded that fill included within its definition wood chips, right?
But they clearly define wood chips as such, and they also define wood chips as mulch. They never clarified that itself. They, they, they defined it as mulch.
Can you tell me the difference between, what you think the difference is between wood chips and mulch?
I'm sorry?
Can you tell me, in your opinion, what is the difference between wood chips and mulch? If we're talking about hundreds of cubic yards of it?
Well, in my experience, again, you know, I'm not an engineer. As far as, you know, wood chips is concerned, it's used for landscaping. It's not considered fill by no means, not a single engineer or architect would dare to say use it as fill. Let's say if you're building a house or a foundation, they would never say, okay, we need to fill this area and then refer to it as wood chip, want you to fill wood chips. It's never used in that purpose at all.
Well, in.
Cannot be categorized as a fill.
Okay, so, in common usage, the term fill can be anything, don't you agree with that?
No, because you'd have to define it.
All right, well, what about garbage in a landfill? You consider garbage a fill in that circumstance?
Well, it's not up to me, it's how the town has written the rules and laws of that town. But theoretically, if you look at the definition of fill, there's no mention of wood chips because it's not a fill.
Right, so, if, I just want to follow your logic though, if, and again, I agree that the term fill is not defined in our regulations, but I just want to follow the logical conclusion that if we were to accept your definition, wouldn't we have to agree that you could dump garbage there and it wouldn't count as fill because it doesn't fit within the definition of earth?
Yes, as long as you have.
Earth material.
Yes, because you could, because it's not defined as fill. If you look at other towns' definitions, they specifically specify in any which way or form or they give you examples, and wood chips is never described as a fill. It has never been done. Come on now.
So, we could put tree trunks there and that would be, that would, you know, large tree trunks you could, you could use to build up that area because they're not defined within the definition of fill.
Well, Commissioner, let me, let me give you an example. When, when the house was purchased, now that you've mentioned garbage, there were bags and bags of garbage, you know, all over the ridgeline. We've actually cleaned all that up and we have pictures of that. So, apparently, the town of Farmington must have approved that because those bags were there for years. And clearly, there's, there's tree stumps there, there's brushes that are there for decades that have, that have been piled up, you can see in Bruce's pictures, and no one questioned that. But yet, they questioned wood chips. And Bruce has been there multiple times, seen those stumps and seen the fallen trees, actually cut trees by residents who lived there prior to Tracy Stefani. You could see they've aged, they're probably over a decade and no questions asked. So, you know, we have to be fair how we treat each individual and we feel we're not being treated fairly, you know. And if, in your garbage bag examples, perfect, they were all there, we have evidence of that. We actually cleaned it all out, brought it to the dumps, probably, probably over 100 bags. We've seen speakers there, couches, parts of swimming pool, they've been on the ridge line for so long that we actually cleaned all that. We should be pleased for all this, instead, we're being picked on for wood chips.
So, as I understand, Mr. Turgenian, do you agree that the Trap Rock Ridge that runs through the spine of Connecticut is a unique geological feature that should be protected?
Of course we protect, I'll give you another example. There was an 18-year-old mini golf course thrown on the ridge line that was on the property. We actually cleaned that, we brought it to the dump. We wanted to clean up that ridge line, we cherish it, we love nature, we love animals, and we're trying to help the situation. By no means are we trying to get it any worse than it is. And the property was abandoned for a long time. If you go by, you'll see we've only improved that. We meant no harm by, you know, putting the wood chips. Visually alone, it makes it look so.
Mr. Turgenian, though, what I'm trying to understand, though, is you're trying to distinguish between what you're, what you put there is better than what other people probably illegally dumped there prior to you, is that what you're suggesting?
What I'm saying is, why wasn't it raised back then that those garbage bags and all those materials were allowed to stay there? And here we are putting wood chips and we have, we have a question as far as, you know, that it's not right and it's fill and it's clearly not fill.
Right, did you put more than 100 cubic yards of material, whether you call it fill or something else, in that area?
I don't think anyone could tell the amount because, you know, even Bruce stated he assumed what he, what's there, but no actually knows.
All right, well, I'm going to ask you, how many truckfuls were brought there?
I'm sorry?
How many truck, how many triaxle truckloads did you have?
I never counted, to be honest, I'm not always at the property.
Didn't somebody have to pay for those trucks to come there?
No, no.
No, somebody did it for nothing?
I'm sorry?
Somebody just brought the, dumped the wood chips there for free?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and who was that?
Um, you know, I have the company's name, if you'd like a letter from.
No, I'd like to know their name right now.
Well, let me get it from my phone, I don't keep track of everything, you know, I own a lot of properties in Connecticut, have a lot of things going on, let me, let me pull it up. I believe they're, they're out of, let me see, hold on. ALX Tree Services.
I'm sorry, what's the name of it?
ALX Tree Services.
Right, and who gave them permission to bring it there?
Who gave them permission?
Yeah. And, um, I also just want to clarify a couple of matters. In the materials you submitted to our board, you mentioned Matthew Pogson, who is a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. You do understand that he is not a part of our board?
Yes, we know that, yes.
So that you're not making any claim that we should consider the fact that he may have been a complainant as part of the, this hearing, correct?
No, no, correct, correct.
And just talking about the Trap Rock Ridge, were you aware there were special provisions, both state law and Farmington regulations, that protected that ridge from being altered without getting permission from either, in the case of state land, the Department of Environmental Protection or a municipal land use board? Before you.
No, I wasn't.
Before you gave them permission to put that mulch there or the wood chip?
I had no idea, but let me clarify one thing that you don't know about. Mark, the town planner previously worked with Bruce. At the time, Bruce and Mark clearly stated I could put wood chips on a property. They specifically told me I could use it. So, I interpreted it as though I could use it.
Okay, well, that's something that I would want to follow up on. You're saying that Mark, that would be Mark Warner?
Correct.
And Mr. Seer specifically gave you permission to place wood chips on the property without getting a permit or anything?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, and when was that?
That was back in, when the initial, back in 2008, when we were having to discuss on how to resolve, resolve that matter.
You're talking about 2018?
Correct.
All right, so are you connecting that, now are you connecting that dispute with the town with what you were doing now that you relied? Are you claiming on their representations that it was okay to put the wood chips there?
Well, I would think two prominent town officials, especially this zoning officer and the town planner tells me I could put wood chips, wouldn't think that's permanent unless they tell me otherwise.
Can you tell me then why you didn't mention this in your material to this, to our board?
To your board?
Permission to do that.
Well, I relied on Tony, who's, who's an engineer, you know, to do his presentation and that's what I relied on.
Well, did Tony speak to Bruce Seer and Mark Warner?
I'm sure he spoke to them on many occasions, I would think, or email, I would think. Well, I can't speak for them, for them, that's between them.
I'm just going to mention, you said that you were not aware of any other towns that, that considered wood chips to be fill? And I'm just going to ask if you're aware of a, of the Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission case of Giumara, I'll just spell it for the record, G-I-U-M-A-R-R-A, from 2004, where there was, a permit was granted for, to put fill and it, but the, but instead they used wood chips, wood material as fill and that was considered not permitted under that permit. Were you aware of that case?
I'm not aware, like you said, you're an attorney, so you're involved, I'm not. But that's one, one view from a one time. I'm saying in general, you know, wood chips is not considered as fill by definition.
Right, well, again, that's, we're going to have to decide that, but it's, I just want to be clear, it's your position that wood chips cannot be. want to be clear, it's your position that wood chips cannot be considered fill. What about mulch?
That, well, that's according to my engineer. I'm not an engineer, I can't go into specific details, you know, those are definitions that an engineer could answer.
Okay, fair enough. And we heard from him, so I understand your position. But again, for the record, there's a case from Enfield, the KAWZAK case, K.A.W.C.Z.A.K. versus Commit, Conservation Commission of Enfield, 2001, where, uh, wood chips and brush were used as fill on a site, and it violated their rules and regulations because it was likely to impact the wetland. Were you aware of that case?
Well, I'm not aware, but I'm also not aware of their pamphlet for the town. They might've, they might've specifically mentioned all that, and if it was in there, sure, they'd be in the wrong, I would, I would hope, but in the Farmington booklet, it's not specified. The absence, from what I'm, if it's absent, then it's not included.
Right. Well, if I were to tell you that those cases, the, the town did not define fill specifically, but the rulings were that the town found that the wood chips constituted improper fill, does that change your opinion at all about your argument here?
Well, we don't know that. I haven't looked at the booklet, we have to go by what you're saying, so we don't have the evidence.
Fair enough.
We can say yes or no. And again, that's for an engineer to be commenting on all that, I'm just, I'm just a civilian.
All right. I'm just going to mention one other case to see if you're aware of it. It's Yard Realty, that's Yard, Y.A.R.D.E. versus Town of Madison Board of Zoning Appeals from 2015, where, uh, the town became aware of, of a mulch being placed on property, and it was deemed to be a violation of the, it was unpermitted deposit of material, uh, that constituted fill, and they determined that the wood chips and mulch were in fact fill, even if they weren't defined as such. Were you aware of that decision? I'm just saying, they seem to be out there, that there are courts that can, and boards that have ruled that it is fill, that's all I'm asking.
Well, we don't have both, like I said, we don't have their pamphlets, so I can't verify it. And the other thing is, Tony, the engineer, just, just pointed out the statute where your definition of wood chips and fill are totally different, he pointed out prior, and you could ask him that question, and I'm just a civilian.
All right. And, and finally, you agree, though, that the definition of fill is, is not spelled out in Section 24, where it talks about placement of fill on property, right?
Well, again, I'm not the engineer, so I can answer those questions. I'm just, you know, civilian, that's all who I am.
All right, so you're, you are relying on Mr. what Mr. Centurelli said, right?
Absolutely. The only thing was, his, his voice was coming in and out, and I hope you heard everything he said.
Well, I tried to have him repeat things if we couldn't hear, and I think that town officials were also pretty diligent about that. Obviously, you know, it is what it is under the circumstances. Um, I just want to ask you a couple of questions. I haven't decided it yet, but if we were to uphold the, the, Mr. Seer's cease and desist order, what are you prepared to do to fix the problem?
Well, that's something, you know, we would talk with Bruce Seer, I believe, or suggestion we might have, but, but in my opinion, the, the facts that, 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 you know, it's, it's not a fill, in my, in my opinion. Again, I'm not an engineer, so, in, in an engineer's opinion, he, he states it's not a fill, according, according to the statute he pointed out. That's something you'd have to discuss with Tony.
Right. And what about the, well, when you say, talk to Tony, would you be hiring Tony as your, as a expert in how to remediate the problem, assuming we decide that it was improper to place it there?
I'm sorry, say that question again?
Yeah, you said we have to ask Tony. I'm asking, are, are you going to retain or have Mr. Centurelli make a proposal to the town on how to fix the problem if we decide that a problem needs fixing?
Well, I would think, you know, cutting down maybe a foot or so, and grading it gradually, you know, and right before the property line, just like Tony has pointed out in, in his simple, you know, map, is what his suggestion was, I have to go by a professional engineer, how he would say, and I have the map on, on the screen right now, that's what I would propose, you know, what we feel is, is rightfully to do so.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions by the members of the commission, members of the board at this time? All right. We're gonna give Mr. Seer the opportunity for rebuttal here. There were certain statements made, representations made, Mr. Seer, about things that you've said to Mr. Tarjanian. So if you want to respond to anything that either he or his, his engineer placed before us, if you want to respond to any of that, this is your opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I, I have, I have a few rebuttals, and I have a few questions as well, if you don't mind.
Yes, you may ask questions for me if you want. If you want to ask him questions, or either of them, you can ask the questions, and we'll do it just the way we did it before.
Thank you. With regards to the storm drainage outlet, he mentioned I had stated that I think that it, that, that it was a problem, and the town's not gonna spend the money to fix it. That's, that's a, that's a little incorrect. The, uh, the discussion on, at the property was, we were, he was trying to argue that the erosion was causing the land to settle, and therefore, that's why he had to put in that fill. So he was talking various ways of we can do that, and I offered, I threw it back at him, I says, what, what do you think we should do? Fix your problem? And he said he wanted to bring the outlet all the way to the edge of the ridge, and just have it dump off the edge of the mountain. I said, I said, well, I said, well, we can't do that. And I, and he goes, well, let's cut it all the way back. I said, well, we can't do that either. I mean, all you're doing is, you're cutting that back, you're, you're gonna be cutting more trees, you're gonna be bringing in fill to those people's front yards to make this work, and for what? It's not gonna cause, or it's not gonna help the situation, or it's not gonna, um, it's not causing a problem now, so there is no, there's no justification for that expense to push that outlet back.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple questions, if you don't mind.
Please.
One of them is for his, here. Uh, one of the questions is, um, did, oh, where's it, there, uh, he mentioned that he wants to move that material around on the site, okay, and try to spread it out. Right there, it shows it's probably, what, 10 or 15 foot elevation change? Would the filling that they want to do necessitate trees to be cut and/or buried to make that plan feasible?
All right. Either of, either Mr. Centurelli or Mr. Tarjanian can respond to that.
Can you repeat that question? I'm sorry, then.
The, the plan that Mr. Centurelli submitted, showing the grading of the wood chips, what the question is, because it's such a steep grade, or, and a, and a, a deep amount of wood chips in there, of, of excess of 10 to 15 feet, would the, would that fill, per his plan, require trees to be further cut or, or buried?
Tony, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, no, I can, I can answer. I can do that as a, as a proposed final grade, uh, to match what's on the other side of the, of the swale. There's obviously room for, for working together and, and saying, well, keep this street, slope the ground, slope the ground there. It's just, it's just an extension a little farther than what it is, pretty flat. It's not locked in.
Nope. I, no, I understand. Just going to a picture, that's all. Yeah, and you could see in there all the trees that are in there, so that fill would necessitate, would be burying those, those, those trees. Um, also, a question for the engineer was, are there different types of fill for various types of projects? Is there structural fill, there's common fill, there's everything, everything we have mentioned today is I wouldn't build a house on it, or I wouldn't build something on it. Are there different types of fill?
Can you answer that, Mr. Centurelli?
Yeah, I was looking for the, I was looking for the mute button. Certainly, if you're gonna do something for roadway stuff, you'd have good process stone or something, but I, the, the intention of what I drew those lines was just to show the grading with the wood chips, not, not, it's not, not the intention to produce anything that was a structural fill. You know, wood chips doesn't, doesn't change the absorption of water, it's, it's, it doesn't create any more runoff on the, on the slopes. I, I looked at it and said, Harry, let's, let's draw some lines and, and make a proposal. I wasn't thinking of which trees were bigger than four inches or six inches when I did them. But nothing's locked in stone, but yeah, I wouldn't consider any of this fill in regard to anything construction-wise, because you can't compact it, you know, maybe 10 years from now, it'll probably be decomposed into something that's, uh, earth, you know, earth-like, like, like, but not certainly as wood chips. Those lines aren't, aren't set in stone. I'd make a joke without even thinking about it. They're not set in stone, they're not, they're not sand earth material, they're just on, on the surface of leveling it out.
All right. Any other questions?
And the last, yep, and I have one more question for him. Did the wood chips, as, as they were placed, and in the volume that they were placed, did that cause a significant earth changes in, uh, to the grade?
Well, it changed the visual grade, and that's the intention of it, to smooth out the grade. It didn't change, in, in the intention of, of, where is that thing? The intention, if you look at the intention of the original protection, of this Trap Rock Ridge, is to preserve their unique environmental attribute, like a wooded, wooded area, covered leaves, twigs, weeds, you know, dead trees and stuff like that. So it does not change, it, it preserves the unique environmental attributes of the ridge. It doesn't change the runoff or change the way it looks. Another thing, the purpose of the ridgeline protection is, is to, to preserve the groundwater recharge function. Well, groundwater recharge has, has not been affected. If anything, it retains a little bit more than bare rock, and, and that little swale, that little runoff from, from the drainage ditch is actually bare rock. It's, it's exposed bare rock, I mean, you can't hide the fact that, maybe not, not huge, but it's bare rock. So wood chips don't take away, they, they do, they preserve the groundwater recharge function. And the third purpose of, of the original protection zone, according to A, the purpose, visual and historic assets in distinct ridgeline areas, it looks the same as anything else with pieces of wood and leaves, it's a lot that has along this ridgeline. It, it doesn't change anything on the original protection zone with wood chips now. So, yeah, filling, filling another half a foot or full, foot here, or two feet there, that doesn't change anything in the purposes of the original protection zone, according to A, different purpose. So I, I don't think there's anything that's been done bad, except for some wood chips that may be a little too overzealous when he dumped them. That's, that's what I'm saying, spread them out a little bit, you know, feather the grade a little bit, if we have, that's, that's my recommendation, without looking at blue cotton, but just being realistic.
All right. Is there anything else, Mr. Seer, that you want to put in the record here?
I just have two other small questions for, for the applicant, Mr. Teterian. And the first one is, did, did, uh, did you receive a copy of the past, or of the ridgeline protection regulations back in, back in 2018 during the first cease and desist?
I did, yes.
Right. Did you call or text me or anything before you brought this fill in to ask me if this could be done or not?
I didn't know. Because the fact that I was told wood chips is okay to be used on a property.
By who?
By, you had mentioned it, and with Mark.
I, I, we never said wood chips in that kind of a volume. If we said wood chips, it was talking about around the house and in the beds, that's what, that's what we were talking about when Mark and I met you out on the site, when it was one of our last meetings out there, that it was used for around the beds. We said, look, we're not gonna go out, and, you know, if someone wants to put mulch around their beds, we're not gonna do that, so, um...
No, you're correct.
And the last question was, did you submit a applicant, did you submit a special permit application for this work recently?
For this work?
Yeah.
As far as a permit, you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, we were cooperating with you, which way to go, whether to get, to go to the other board or this board, and we eventually switched to this board, as far as, well, we've always cooperated with the town, including yourself.
I think the question is, did you submit, exactly, submitted a special permit application?
Well, I believe that's on hold. We had applied for both applications, because we didn't know which way to go, and initially, I believe we were, we were going to the special permit board, and then we decided to go take this one instead, of wood advice.
And then that application, and does that, and does that special permit application say add wood chips to lawn for landscaping purposes?
I don't know what it says, because the engineer wrote it up, so I'm not sure, I can't comment on that, because I'm not the one who wrote it up.
Did you sign it, Mr. Tarjanian? Did you sign it?
I don't know if I signed it, or who signed it, I'm not sure, I don't recall, to be honest.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Seer?
No, that's it, Chairman, thank you.
All right. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask if any of the commissioners now have any additional questions for either party before we close the, the hearing portion of this matter.
Commissioner Callahan, I do not.
Right. I mean, I'm not gonna go through the list. If any of the board members wish to speak, now's the time just to speak up. I'll hold it open for 30 seconds.
It was noticed as an appeal, yeah. Mr. Chairman, we'd ask, I, it was noticed as a public hearing, I understand that it's appeal, and it's a little deferent, but in the abundance of caution, if we could...
I, I misspoke. I didn't mean it as a, I meant the, the fact-finding portion of this hearing, not the public.
Sure, sure, thank you.
Right. And I think 30 seconds have now expired, so I'm gonna now close the evidentiary portion of this proceeding, and then we'll move to discussion and deliberation. And just for the record, our deliberations are conducted on the record, but the only people that speak at this point are members of the board. So let's start with entertaining a motion regarding the, the current appeal. Somebody make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Commissioner Carrier, I would make a motion to uphold the zoning, zoning officer cease and desist order for regarding Lot 8655, Nipcore Ridge Road, adjacent to 21 Nipcore Ridge Road, R40 Zone.
Second, Commissioner Carrier's motion.
Do we have a second?
I just seconded it.
Okay. All right, discussion. Don't be shy.
Everybody's tired.
Yes.
The regulation talks about the deposition of earth materials. You can't just take truckloads of fill and dump them on the ridgeline.
So are we in agreement, then? So are we in agreement, then, that fill would include, is broad enough to include wood chips?
I think it is, you know, and I debated this and went back and forth with myself over it. It talks about a variety of materials, but then earth materials, that's a very broad category.
I will look at this a little more narrowly, actually. You know, we've obviously heard a lot of testimony on, you know, fill and the definition, but in my experience, which I have a lot of experience in this area of expertise, and fill and mulch and all this, and I have seen trees get buried a foot or a foot and a half with mulch and die along the way. And any amount of wood chips or mulch or whatever you want, and that quantity would, in essence, basically deteriorate any of the vegetation in that area, including the trees. Now, it would take a little bit of time, but I feel that the intent of the regulations was not upheld by doing this.
But I think I'd also throw in, when you're talking about mulcher wood chips, and I think somebody had mentioned putting them around a garden bed, that's one thing, but when you're actually changing a grade, which is exactly what they wanted to do here, and basically fill in a spot, that's different.
And that's Mr. Brockman, Commissioner Brockman speaking, just for the record.
Yes.
Anyone else want to speak about this matter?
I would hope that, Commissioner Carrier, I would hope that, you know, if this does get upheld as a cease and desist, that whatever removal that may have to be done gets done in accordance with the town. I know we don't have the authority to say that here. I just, from my experience, removing any kind of excess bulk material like this could do more destruction in the long run, and I just want to put that on the record.
I'll note that in my review of the statutes, we have the right to, if you wished to, and we can discuss that as we're debating this, to not only affirm or deny the appeal, but to modify the order as well, so that we would be within our rights to make specific recommendations to the town if we wish to do that. I am not, I don't know if we're at that point. I think I asked those questions about, all that is being asked at this point is about whether to uphold the cease and desist. The next step is, as I think Mr. Seer said, there's either daily, there are fines, or there, or there's working with the town and remediation, and I will just say that we could do that, we could actually recommend specific action of removal if we wished to, but I'm not sure I'm ready to do that. I'm going to also agree, I think, I'm looking at this, I think, narrowly, and I'm looking at it in terms of whether or not, there's two issues here. One is whether these wood chips can fall within the definition of fill. I cited some cases, I looked at that a town can define fill without, a board, rather, can state that it concludes that this kind of material is fill. It does not have to be, you know, and I understand where Mr. Centurelli is coming from, but I think that only applies to the removal of materials from the, for site improvement. We would not be including in there if there was old bathtubs on property, that it would require, under Section 23, under earth removal, a permit to remove bathtubs and other things that were debris that were thrown on the property. However, under Section 24, I see fill, just as I say land fill includes trash, garbage, and other organic material. I don't see the distinction that Mr. Centurelli was talking about. Anything that fills a space, it may be deemed to be fill, whether it's natural or man-made. And based on that, I believe that wood chips and other organic products placed in a large quantity to fill a crevasse, or a valley for that matter, is fill under our regulations. I know it's a question that can be challenged if somebody wants to challenge it, but that's how I believe our regulations should be interpreted. I will then go further, since we haven't talked about it. Under Section 26, the Ridge Line Protection Zone, and the reasons for it, both in the regulations and under our statute, it's to leave the ridge in as natural a state as possible. I don't disagree with Mr. Targanyan that other homeowners along this ridge, not only in Farmington, but in Avon going all the way up, have done immense damage to this ridge and to altered its natural state, even though the purpose of that regulation was to prevent that from happening. The fact that people dump metal and parts of swimming pools and all that, I think is a tragedy, and if I ever saw anybody doing that, I would call either the police or the Department of Environmental Protection. I, one of the things that I enjoy doing is walking the ridgeline trails. I maintain a section of the Mediacomit Trail, and the worst thing is you go up there and you find any kind of destruction or change in that, in the ridgeline, either from above or from below, looking up. And I believe that earth change, if it includes things like removing trees and clearcutting, then it would also include piling wood chips in such a substantial amount that it alters the view from the valley below, looking up. And for that reason, I will also vote to affirm the decision of the zoning enforcement officer. Based on that, I would ask the, unless anyone else, does anyone else have anything they want to say before I ask for a vote? Hearing, nothing. Shannon, I'd ask if you could call the vote.
Certainly. Commissioner Callahan.
I'm here.
Yes, we're calling the vote to, the motion is to uphold the zoning officer's cease and desist order.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Carrier.
Aye.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Aye.
Commissioner Brockman.
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh.
Aye.
And Chair Schoenhorn.
Aye.
All right. Based on that, we will, the decision of the zoning enforcement officer is upheld. I will just note for the record that the applicant has the right to appeal this further to the superior court within the times provided by statute. I don't give any advice on what that timeframe is. That is his right. Going back to the agenda, I'm going to just ask if people had a chance to review the proposed change in the bylaws, I'm not going to, it's too late to actually have discussion, but they can, I would just ask if everybody had an opportunity to see it, so we can discuss it at our next meeting, assuming it's a shorter meeting.
We can do that.
Yes. By consensus, can we then not have any further discussion at this time and then pass that till the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Yes, I agree. More people will probably be here as well.
Okay, very good. And then finally, I'm going to ask for a motion with regard to the, well, it's penultimate, actually, on the minutes from the December 14, 2020 meeting. I'll entertain a motion regarding the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the December 14 meeting, December 2020-14 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Who abstained?
I wasn't at the meeting.
All right. Mr. Carrier abstains. All right. And then finally, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Who made the motion?
Everybody.
Of the firm.
For the record, a motion. Somebody.
I'll second it.
All right.
We got it, all right.
John Carrier seconding, who made the motion then? Mr. Brockman?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All in favor? All in favor.
Aye.
All right. Good luck, everyone. Have a great month. Take care.
Thank you.